Good evening and welcome to our September 14th, 2020 work session of the Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have one big item for discussion. We're going to talk about equity programs in the city. But before we get to that, I wanted to take a moment to welcome our new city manager who started today, Tanisha Riley. Welcome, Tanisha.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an excellent first day and excited to be here for my first council meeting.
And it's gonna be a doozy, too. So you picked the right one to start with.
You know, I like to keep things easy and, you know, light, carefree.
Perfect, perfect. So before we get started with the meeting, I need to swear you in. We have to give you an oath of office as city manager. And so I want to first off, just warn you, it is not the easiest oath to recite. It's a little clunky and I keep saying, one day, we should revisit the language of our oath. But what we'll do is I will just have you repeat after me if you raise your right hand and just repeat after me. Except for the part where I say state your name. So I state your name.
I, Tanisha Riley.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will.
And that I will.
The best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of city manager.
Execute the office of city manager.
According to the United States.
According to the United States.
And Maryland constitutions.
And Maryland constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. You are sworn in.
Thank you very much. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say thank you to Dennis for an outstanding transition period. I know that he's done a great job leading the staff since Tony's departure earlier this year. And he's also been incredible to work with over these last few weeks as I've tried to keep a foot in both worlds so that I can be ready to hit the ground running. And so I just want to say true thanks to Dennis. He's been a great partner and I look forward to working with him.
Excellent. And we gave Dennis a big thanks and round of applause last week. And we certainly echo your remarks. And speaking of Dennis' tech team, I think we need to bring Dennis on screen as we begin this. And I just want to give a very small intro to this topic in that what we're going to have here is a presentation from our Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Racial Equity Cohort and a presentation on initial data collection and police department statistics, procurement vendor information and preliminary research on street building names. And the reason we're here is sort of given all that's going on in the world and given who we are and who we aspire to be as the city, we thought that this would be a good time to sort of take stock of what we do to advance and support equity in our organization and in our community. And so staff has put together sort of a giant presentation and I'm going to let Dennis take the lead here. Go ahead, Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As the mayor noted, tonight, we'll be having a number of presentations to provide an update on some of the racial equity efforts staff has been undertaking over the past few months. To give everybody a little bit of background, the formal process started in September 2019 when the city of Gaithersburg established the Racial Equity Cohort, who will be presenting tonight to look at the issues regarding racial equity at the organizational and the community level. You know, as we can all see over the past seven months, it's even becoming more important that we examine the issues of racial equity and also social economic equity. The national impacts of COVID have brought to the forefront the disparities that have always been present in our nation and our communities, but really have become more of a focus or at least brought more to light through COVID. In addition, furthermore, the death of George Floyd has galvanized the nation and our communities to take a systematic evaluation of the programs, the processes and other city actions to make sure we ensure that we are addressing the underlying drivers within our community that perpetuate racial and social economic inequity. This systematic evaluation is complicated and will require us to look at things from a multiple number of perspectives and often new perspectives. It will also require us to take a hard look at past practices and actions. This will not be an easy discussion or a series of discussions, but is really necessary to ensure that we can provide opportunity and advancement to all the members of our community. For the council, in terms of process, feel free to ask questions as the staff members make their presentations. We will leave some time at the end of each presentation also for questions. Once all the presentations have been completed, we'll bring back all the staff participants and they would be able to answer some additional questions, should you have any, at the end of the presentations.
Dennis, let me just jump in and note, if we're on a screen share, I can't see anybody raising their hand. So I'm just gonna leave it up to you guys. If you feel moved to ask a question, just ask a question because I probably can't see you to recognize you.
And there will be some screen sharing, especially with the PowerPoint presentations. With that, Brian, could you bring up Kevin Etters and Nathan Bassett? And while Brian's doing that, this first presentation tonight will be from the city's Racial Equity Cohort, who will be presenting some of the information on workforce demographics that they have collected and then also the cohort's recommendations on potential next steps. Kevin, if you want to start.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am Kevin Etters, a project manager at the Department of Public Works. This cohort was a partnership between the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, the first regional learning cohort of local government staff to address the greater societal issues of systemic racism, racial equity and equal opportunity. The cohort launched in September 2019 and included more than 100 managers and staff from 11 jurisdictions. Throughout the cohort, staff received guidance from subject matter experts on a variety of issues where structural racism impacts outcomes, including policing, development, management and transportation. This was not just a learning cohort, it was an action cohort. Each jurisdiction was charged with creating a pilot project for work during the cohort and beyond. We structured our projects so that we could build a foundation around data collection. In this evening's presentation, we will talk about the challenges presented by the pandemic and how it impacted our work around data collection. We will provide you with updates on the work that was accomplished throughout the cohort and recommendations for continuing the work toward racial equity. Nathan Bassett will now provide insight on the history of racial equity in Gaithersburg and why it is important. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Nathan Bassett and I will be presenting with Kevin this evening. Before I begin the portion of the presentation discussing why this issue is important and some of the historical background underlying the issues, I want to state that much, if not all, of this conversation will make people feel discomfort. These issues are not easy to discuss. And for those of us that are white, we have typically had the privilege to avoid conversations about race and equity while still benefiting from the elevated level of opportunity that it bestows upon us. One of the most important pieces of this conversation is that if we want to address the issue of racial equality, we must center it on the experiences of those who are marginalized by our systems of governance. For white people like myself, that means setting aside personal experiences and opinions to really listen to the experiences of people of color and the treatment that they have endured as members of our society. I understand that some of the statements I make this evening will make people feel discomfort. Please sit with those feelings and question why you are having them. Racism is an insidious problem and we will be required to meet those feelings head on in order to rectify the inequities in our society. Why is racial equity important, particularly here in the city of Gaithersburg? Racial disparities impact finances, health and well-being, educational attainment, employment and so many other pieces of a person's life. I'd like to provide a few examples, some of which speak to the greater national context of the issue of racial equality and others which speak to the local issues that can be observed within Montgomery County and the city of Gaithersburg. First, we need to consider the historical significance of the city's location in a state below the Mason Dixon line. According to an article from Bethesda Magazine titled "Where Slavery Slept", that was published back in 2010, Montgomery County had 5,400 slaves just before the Civil War, accounting for almost one-third of the population. The title character for the Harriet Beecher Stone novel Uncle Tom's Cabin was based on Josiah Henson, a slave that at one time resided on the Riley Farm near what is now Rockville Town Center. He escaped in 1830 and published an autobiography in 1849 about his life as a slave. The underpinnings of the subjugation of African and indigenous peoples in the United States did not end with the end of the Civil War. The mindset and attitudes that were required to justify the objectification and ownership of people of a different race do not disappear overnight because of how deeply they run. The third president of the United States, Thomas Jefferson, once opined about the inferior intellectual nature of black people in his book, Notes on the State of Virginia, published in 1787. The scientific racism he was a proponent of continued to be used to justify slavery for many years after his death, even though he himself argued for the abolition of slavery and resettlement of African peoples outside of the United States. Arguments like these have been part of the inspiration for many attacks on black people in the US, including Dylann Roof's attack on the Mother Emanuel Amin Church in Charleston, South Carolina, where Roof entered during a Wednesday evening Bible study in June 2015 and shot and killed nine black parishioners. Closer home, a white college student who had been interacting with the Facebook page called Alt-Rich Nation killed Richard Collins III, a 23-year-old black man who was about to graduate from Bowie State University and had been recently commissioned as a second lieutenant in the US Army. The killing happened while Mr. Collins was visiting some friends at the University of Maryland College Park in May of 2017. At the time when the killer approached the group that Collins was a part of, he had an unfolded pocket knife in hand, which he used to stab Collins, who was the only black person in the group. Moving to local demographics, Gaithersburg has changed drastically over the course of the last 30 years, from two-thirds non-Hispanic white in 1990 to only one-third non-Hispanic white in 2019, based on a city-visioning exercise. During this time period, the city grew by approximately 30,000 people, or 77.6%. Of the current residents, approximately 39% are foreign-born, according to the US Census Bureau's 2014 to 2018 American Community Survey estimates. Gaithersburg has welcomed this diversity, though some elements of living in Gaithersburg have been harder to navigate for minorities, such as the school system. Moving to the local, or before I talk about the school system, I want to mention why I'm discussing it. Montgomery County Public Schools has created a powerful data collection method to assess their shortcomings on matters of race and equity and to determine what steps they need to take going forward. Data collection is going to be extremely important to the city's efforts going forward and we need to assess how to get the information we need and how to analyze it. The experiences the MCPS has had around data collection could potentially help inform how data can help direct the city's efforts. MCPS was not fully integrated until 1960, six years after their ruling in Brown versus Board of Education required school districts to integrate. While our demographics are continuing to change, new concerns about race and equity have arisen in the school system as long ago as 1994. MCPS began addressing those issues through a robust tracking program that identifies obstacles to opportunity based on race. One such optical was that only 30% of Latino students that qualified for the highest level math course in sixth or seventh grade are actually placed into these classes, which is at a much lower rate than children of other races and may have lifelong impacts on their learning progression and ultimately their success in adulthood. These are a few of the examples that I have seen while participating in the cohort on race and equity. And there are too many other examples to share within the time period allotted today. The urgency of taking action to reduce the harm caused by systemic racism has become more apparent over the last year for our cohort. The significant disparities in COVID-19 outcomes by race, the murder of George Floyd and the subsequent nationwide protests of his death have shown that the reality with which staff entered the cohort are significantly different than the reality of today, which has altered the expectations of what should result from the city's participation in the cohort. The disparities in treatment by race are not a new phenomenon, but we are beginning to recognize as a society the harmful impacts of racial inequity. Kevin will now introduce the other members of the cohort. Next slide, please.
Along with Nate and myself, our team consisted of Patrice Payne from Community and Public Relations, Tam Castillo from Parks, Recreation and Culture, and Lieutenant Chris Vance from the Police Department. Next slide, please. The cohort met monthly in DC from September 2019 through February 2020. Five of the meetings were all day from 8:30 to 5:00. Two of the meetings were half-day deep-dive sessions. With the impact of COVID-19, Gare transitioned to virtual meetings in March, which then continued through July. Each session was packed full of content, but I will highlight some of what we learned throughout the sessions. The two deep-dive sessions were focused on four specialized areas: equitable development, governing for equity, public safety and transportation. From September through February, we discussed terminology and approach to talking about race. We learned about the unconscious mind and the frames through which our brains help us organize information and navigate the world. These frames are social and are shaped by our environment. We examined implicit bias and explicit bias and how to address those biased thoughts and communicate about race. We learned about results-based accountability, starting with the result wanted and working backwards to get the performance measures, which leads to data-informed and transparent decision-making. We discussed building accountability mechanisms and learned the importance of using a racial equity toolkit, especially when it comes to organizational change. We had deeper discussions and strategies for building an institutional infrastructure to advance racial equity and applying the racial equity toolkit across the entire organization. In January, Gare also set up a visit to the National Museum of African-American History and Culture after the session. For me, visiting the museum during this cohort was an opportunity to reflect on the discussions we are engaging in and work we are doing around racial equity. It was a deeply profound and intense experience. The exhibits are laid out in a way that strips all dignity from you and presents the sheer brutality of slavery and racism that will leave you wanting to catch your breath. The inhumane treatment of our fellow human beings is not easy to see and cannot be reconciled. However, as you move through the floors and through time, the exhibits start to bring you some optimism in the progress that has been made. It is truly a journey that emphasizes the need to be involved in the fight for racial equity and at the same time, the progress that has been made is not nearly enough. In March, we transitioned to virtual meetings. The discussions and learning were focused around communicating with your community and messaging during COVID. How you frame the message and the narratives that you use matter. We had a final deep-dive session of the topics we mentioned earlier. And in June, we had a final symposium where each jurisdiction presented updates and reflections on their work. It was a difficult transition to virtual sessions. Each session was about two hours long, which was not enough time for Gare to cover all of the content that was intended to be taught. Obviously, the pandemic was tough on all of us and a participation rate for the virtual sessions was cut almost in half. Some of the content, specifically the Train the Trainer session, was not able to be delivered virtually. This is one of the most important sessions for our learning and it will be used by staff to help normalize the conversation around race within our organization. Gare is creating a virtual session that they say will be offered in the future. As for the impact on our main project goal of data collection, the pandemic halted this work. One area of focus for data collection was to implement the race/ethnicity question on job applications. This feature in NeoGov was turned on as of March 2020. However, with the hiring freeze that resulted from the pandemic, there is no data available to analyze and present. The ability to analyze that data moving forward will provide insight into our hiring process and if it is equitable. Another area of focus for data collection was to implement the race/ethnicity question on registration forms for parks and recreation programs. This data was halted as all programs and activities were canceled. However, there was some data collected this summer when registrations resumed. There will be more on that data in a future slide. The team was able to start analyzing current workforce data and we have some information on the next few slides. Next slide, please. The data we analyze and are presenting is a snapshot of the workforce as of January 2020. We can see that almost half of our workforce is part-time staff. Parks, Recreation and Culture makes up 90% of part-time staff who work on seasonal and year-round programs with a diverse composition. Next slide, please. Of the smaller departments, Community and Public Relations and Finance are diverse, while the City Manager's Office, Office of the City Attorney and IT are predominantly white. While some employees have left the city and new employees have arrived, this will be our baseline for data collection. The next two slides will show some charts of the workforce demographics. So we can see from this slide that when looking at the racial breakdown of full-time staff to part-time staff, the demographics of part-time staff are more closely aligned with the demographics of city residents. However, there are some caveats to mention that could benefit from a deeper dive. We did not have time to really look at things like length of tenure, but acknowledge that some full-time positions do not have a high turnover. 64% of full-time employees have been with the city for 10-plus years. Parks and Recreation has 60% of its part-time staff that have been with the city for five-plus years. Our workforce as a whole is fairly closely representative of the community. Black and African-Americans are overrepresented and Hispanic and Latinos are underrepresented by about seven percentage points each. The Asian population is the most underrepresented in all areas. Next slide, please. However, when we look at the workforce compared to management positions, we see much larger disparities. A root cause analysis on management can ask why this is occurring. Are there unintended roadblocks in hiring and recruitment? Are job qualifications not attracting too wide a pool of candidates, meaning are they too restrictive? For newer employees, what training and promotional opportunities are in place to ensure growth? Nathan will now present data for Parks and Recreation and continue on to our recommendations.
As Kevin has shown, analyzing our workforce is one of the integral pieces to understanding if we are furthering the cause for racial equity in our community. I would like to touch on other aspects of our data collection efforts. For the past several months, we have been working on beginning data collection with our Parks, Recreation and Culture Department to determine the racial breakdown of the program participants. This data would be used at some point in the future to determine if we are serving the community equitably and give us a basis for surveying the community to determine what potential recreation options that they might like to see. We began collecting race data with registrations on June 19th and were able to collect data from 164 responses, some of which had multiple event registrations. Cam Castillo and Parks, Recreation and Culture was able to analyze the data that we have collected so far, but with the drop in registrations and decrease in programming available due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we don't have a large enough number of registrations to provide any real metrics. For the classes that we collected data on this year, the number of registrants is only a fraction of what we had for the same time period last year, with less than one-seventh of the number of registrants. In addition, the number and type of activities we have been able to offer differ drastically, particularly with regard to group sports and summer camps, leading to only one-sixth of the number of programs, with only three smaller summer camps taking place. The other programs being offered were aquatics classes and virtual programming through the Benjamin Gaither Center. From the data that we've collected so far related to registrations, the activities that are most reflective of the city's demographics are summer camps. For fall, registration began on August 17th and the programming has about one-third the number of activities that it did last year. We are hoping that registrations will pick up from our summer numbers, but with the pandemic, we are still trying to determine how recreation participants are reacting to the changing situation. Next slide, please. At this point, I would like to move into the recommendations that we have produced as a cohort. The first recommendation is likely to be the most challenging, given the limited resources that we have as a local government. However, we as a group decided that the most effective way to move forward on these issues would be to hire a full-time staff member that would become the central point of contact and coordinator of all programming related to race and equity within the city of Gaithersburg and the liaison on race and equity to the county and the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Their initial task would be to start with building upon the work of this cohort and creating a core team within the city to conduct work on race and equity throughout. The core team would be composed of at least one employee from each department and at least one SLT member. This position would become responsible for training the Mayor and City Council, senior leadership team, division chiefs and so on, in understanding racial equity as a key value, the key concepts surrounding it and the deployment of racial equity tools in their work. These concepts are intended to become a lens for the work that individuals are doing, which impacts the way we might design programming, communications spaces or our budget. They would be responsible for building out community and employee surveys, developing the city's racial equity toolkit and to continue the work collecting and analyzing data. Surveys would include pieces to understand city employees' racial equity awareness and the general feelings of all employees on topics of race and equity, as well as specific career path surveys for certain departments. Development of the racial equity toolkit would include determining the desired results based on community engagement efforts, developing community indicators and performance measures on race and equity, data collection and analysis, community engagement, root cause analysis and an implementation plan. While we found that having a full-time position was the highest priority recommendation to come from our cohort, there are alternate scenarios for the Mayor and City Council and city management to consider. Potentially, the duties of coordinating race and equity work within the city could be reclassed into an existing position or a proposal could be made for a position share with another local jurisdiction. Both options would have limitations, but any option being considered needs further review to make the best determination for the city. I should note, aside from the discussions within the cohort and while the cohort spoke with the deputy city manager and slinger, no further internal discussions about a position or the financial and organizational implications of a new position have yet occurred. During our cohort, at least three other jurisdictions in the cohort have hired a chief equity officer, including Montgomery County, Charles County and the city of Alexandria. Many jurisdictions are beginning to understand how important matters of race and equity are in terms of development for their residents and for society at large. As a group, the Gaithersburg members of the cohort would recommend that, given the scope of the work that lies ahead for our community, we need to dedicate whatever resources we are able to to strengthen our commitment to racial equity. This would mean a full-time position, which would look at the city in a holistic fashion and be able to provide some authority to move the needle on racial equity. Next slide, please. We also thought it would be helpful to discuss the qualifications of a person who we think would be equipped to work on racial justice issues. Education would be important, but we would like to emphasize that the person who would be best equipped to lead the city's efforts will have experience organizing around the ideas of race and equity previously. We would need them to be able to apply a racial justice lens across the breadth of the city's operations and to have some management experience that they could use to facilitate movement on race and equity across the organization. Work with community partners and language skills would also be useful for the position. And while there are existing positions in the city that include components of these skills, the position would be unique with regard to the required skill set. Next slide, please. Aside from the potential position, we recommend doing a deeper dive on the city's workforce and looking more closely at the racial composition across departments and levels of management. This would include a workforce survey on race and equity with questions that would delve into the attitudes and behaviors of employees with regards to hiring, promotions, evaluations and general atmosphere in the workplace. We will continue to collect data on the racial composition of the applicant pool and monitor how reflective that is of the city's population. We will also continue collecting data from the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department to see how reflective our program registrants are of the city's population. This could lead to some changes in program offerings in the future, but would likely be paired with surveys or other pieces of community and. This could lead to some changes in program offerings in the future, but would likely be paired with surveys or other pieces of community engagement. Lastly, we would like to see an internal structure created within the city to lead the work on race and equity here. This core team would be covered by the SLT or a committee, but would need a point person for coordinating the efforts overall. We would also recommend at the outset that there be no more than three initiatives ongoing to focus the efforts of the city and provide the greatest likelihood that the programs are successful. Right now, these efforts are focused on data collection and the creation of an internal team. All of us that were able to participate in the cohort are grateful for the opportunity to do so. We have not taken this charge lightly, and we see the importance of focusing resources on work to reduce racial disparities within the city. Kevin will provide some final thoughts on our work as a cohort. Thank you. Next slide, please.
In closing, and on behalf of the racial equity team, I would like to extend our appreciation for the opportunity to work on such an important issue. Our team worked extremely hard and were focused on learning from the subject matter experts and creating sustainable pilot projects. The team would also like to thank Deputy City Manager Anslinger for his efforts facilitating the cohort. As we have seen, people and communities of color suffer greater suffer from greater health and income disparities. People of color are much more likely to be disadvantaged and under resourced in school, live in poor neighborhoods, earn less wages for the same work as their white counterparts, much less likely likely to be in positions of management, and so many more examples. The global pandemic has highlighted these disparities for us all to see. We're also witnessing the pervasive and abhorrent results of racism that has been given a megaphone and platform to spread so blatantly in plain sight. The nationwide civil unrest stemming from the murder of George Floyd, among too many others, shows us that the call for action cannot be overlooked any longer. We need to be cognizant of the systemic racism racism that is everywhere and that we need to be involved in the fight to eliminate it. It is time that all government institutions, large and small, do everything possible to advance racial equity. There has always been and will always be socioeconomic concerns which affect all races and ethnicities. However, achieving a racial equity achieving racial equity will address the longstanding wounds of racism that has only affected and been inflicted on people of color. It will also be a rising tide that will lift all boats. As a small city, most of our major services are provided by the county, but there is still much work to be done within our organization, from collecting and analyzing data to equitable hiring and promotion processes, to awareness workshops and training on racial equity tools, and to community outreach and working with Montgomery County and surrounding jurisdictions. Therefore, we need to have the organizational infrastructure that will allow for this work to continue and grow. The racial equity cohort team understands the challenges facing the city. But the team believes strongly in a recommendation for a full time position that we presented this evening. We must embrace the gravity of this moment with a serious commitment and join the other jurisdictions in our larger community to advance racial equity. This concludes our presentation, and we will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Nate, Kevin, thank you guys very, very much. Thorough, thought provoking presentation. I'll note to there are a number of members of the public that are on the line and presumably some of them are going to want to speak and we're going to go through all the presentations and then I'll call for the public and then we can the council can get final thoughts, but I wanted to open it up to the council now if there's any questions or comments or if we should go on to the next presentation.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, if I can.
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. So thank you, Nathan and Kevin, for your thorough presentations. I appreciate all of the engagement we've had throughout the process, even though it's been augmented due to the pandemic. I appreciate you guys seeing it through to the end and look forward to continuing to discuss what you all have learned. When I attended the COG event and learned about the GARE program and brought it back to the city, I'm really glad Tony saw the need for us to create a cohort within our city, and I'm glad that it has been a rewarding experience. I did have some questions about some of the data that was shared. It looked like the cohort explored other issues during the trainings. I saw policing, development, management, and transportation. I was wondering why the recreational department was the first department selected since we weren't already tracking racial data.
Thank you, Councilmember Sales. I think when we looked at getting started, you know, with this work, there could be a lot to be done with Parks and Rec, and it was, you know, an open opportunity to introduce the race ethnicity question online and on the paper forms. And it could be a good like ground, a ground foundation, like a base for us to implement the data that we could get back, you know, quickly. However, with the pandemic, you know, it turned out not to be the case. But we just thought it would be a good place to start along with the workforce data.
And I would like to add as well, Councilmember Sales, the deep dive sessions and those tracks were not decided until after we had already chosen which members of the organization were going to be serving in the cohort. So we didn't know that, you know, like planning and development would be a track. We didn't know that transportation would be a track. And so the choices of who was in the cohort may, I can't speak to hypotheticals, but they may have been different if, you know, in terms of who was being represented if we had known that beforehand.
All right. Okay, um, based on the recommendation, it seemed that the work was more focused on the internal workings of the city more so than the community aspect. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on the experience and is that the reason why racial equity position was recommended to continue that work outside the city and not just internally? That's a part of the reason.
Yes, definitely a big part of the reason there's the work is difficult, it's time consuming, it's hard. There's a lot to do. I mean, you know, we spend a lot of hours and a lot of work on what we could do. But then we have, you know, regular jobs and have to go back and try and do them all. And I think just, you know, to focus on what we need inside the organization and then reach out to the community, that's another level that has to be added in there that we just feel the full time position will be needed and greatly greatly used.
I would also like to add that, you know, it's important, I think, in these matters to have a subject matter expert. And for those of us who are participating in the cohort, as much as we read, as much as we ponder, as much as we listen to the experiences of people, you know, people of color in this country, we can't know everything that there is to know about this. And because it's beyond the scope of our particular positions, you know, all of us are we're are very vested in seeing this happen, but it we're just trying to speak to the issue in such a way that, you know, we can still do our jobs, but also know that the work continues on here in the city.
Thank you both for those for answering the questions. That's all I have for now.
I saw Rob's hand go up. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin and Nate. A very insightful presentation. I particularly was enlightened by the data dealing with the workforce and workforce transition or the workforce demographics as it applies to full time, part time, as well as management. And so obviously, I think we have in the past here in the city talked about diversity initiatives in hiring. Apparently, it's not necessarily, we're not there yet, is I think what the data is showing us. And so I was wondering if there were any recommendations or thoughts in going through this process as to, you know, other than, for example, you know, hiring a person who's knowledgeable in the area as a full time member of our staff, are there other tools that would be available to a city consulting consultants, for example, technology, training, things like that, that you came across in your in this endeavor that would be useful in addressing the workforce issues here in the city?
Yes, definitely consulting. You know, it would be nice to see if there's a way to collectively, you know, work with other jurisdictions and, you know, hire a consultant to, you know, work in that area and come to work with all of us. Trainings, you know, this training with GARE was very good. But it did have its downsides as well. When we looked at the way this cohort was structured for us being a small city, you know, the other jurisdictions, some of the larger jurisdictions had larger teams. There was a lot of working with our own teams at the cohorts, and we would have liked to seen, you know, it's structured in a way that we could have interacted and worked more with other jurisdictions to learn and get a better collaboration. So I'm sure there are some more trainings out there that will be beneficial. But, you know, to get the, like, even just to get the entire workforce, you know, awareness workshops or, you know, trainings will be a lot. So that's why, you know, if you look at a full time position to command and coordinate all that, you know, it would probably be more beneficial over the long run.
Just to add to that, so we've seen consulting, we've seen trainings, there have been a number of the consultants that provided the trainings during the GARE sessions were extremely insightful. Some of the organizations that were participating in the cohort, I think, also had consultants or you know, coming in externally and looking at it overall and then kind of doing an organizational assessment. I think that that's been done in some of these jurisdictions prior to their participation in the cohort. The, I think the real challenge for us here in Gaithersburg is this is the baseline for us. There isn't a lot of data from previous to the cohort. I mean, you know, when we looked at Parks and Recreation and Culture, they did have some data prior to this cohort, but not substantial amounts of data, and it wasn't collected in a in a manner that was systematic. And so, you know, there are potential other options. It could be reclassed into an existing position. It could be, like I was saying earlier, a position share, which is not something that I think is has been done in this particular context, but could be possible with another jurisdiction in the area. The challenge is is that the larger organizations in the Metropolitan Washington region have the resources to do race and equity work, and we don't really. And so, you know, we're looking at a case where you know, organizations are starting this work and we're seeing, oh, they're hiring one or two people and they're getting it going. But some of the larger organizations like Seattle, I came from San Antonio, I think they have something like six positions now that are working on race and equity. And so if we're looking at full time equivalents, this is probably something that we'll need to it's almost pioneering in a way, because there isn't really a good roadmap for us.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate that, you know, this is just the beginning. And as we go forward and we share ideas and collect data and decide on the appropriate course of action. You know, this will be something that's pioneering for all of us. And so I'm happy that both of you and the entire group got felt this was a meaningful experience and that you participated in it. Thanks.
And this and then Mike and then Ryan. Go ahead, Dennis.
Follow up that also part of the COG work group is a larger group that's looking at what COG is providing. You know, COG actually did the initial kind of outlay with GARE. And we've been looking at some of different models for some of the smaller communities. You know, I think that's one thing that came out of the whole COG GARE experiences. There is kind of this difference based upon demographics in terms of city size between the larger really counties and a few municipalities and the smaller municipalities. So we've been discussing as a side group, there's a kind of a planning group that's working with COG about what future programs to offer. And that's one of the things that we spent some time on is trying to figure out some tools that would help the smaller communities, whether that be as as Nate said, kind of this position sharing, but also hiring a contractor to come in and do diversity training in the sense that we're looking at bias and all of those things. And they could basically go from community to community and have one centralized person who would get a bigger picture of the overall metropolitan area, but working with COG to identify that and how we would structure that.
Thanks, Dennis. We've got a mic.
Yeah, I was gonna actually follow on or bring up the fact that we don't have to be pioneers in this. There are a number of cities, including cities our size throughout the United States that have started to undertake these efforts in the last couple of years. In fact, the National League of Cities started the Race Equity and Leadership Program two years, three years ago, I believe, and those programs are available. And certainly, the Council of Governments has these programs as well. I participated in some of those activities or workshops more recently and learned that as you, as you, Kevin and Nathan and the rest of the team have recommended, that it does take a full time person to kind of manage these things regardless of the size of the city. And there are certainly examples that are close by. And one of the plans we've seen in the package is Tacoma Parks efforts in this area. So I think the first thing we have to do is is kind of a self study or an evaluation of what our own situation is, what certainly a little bit more than demographics, but an understanding of of where we are on these issues. And certainly, that can be undertaken by by a contractor, but I still think you need a full time, a person with expertise to lead that effort, identify the contract contractor and then and then help direct the work. So I'm glad to see the recommendation for a full time person. I guess my biggest concern is how what the reporting lines will be for that full time individual. I don't think that should be somebody that job shares in any of the existing departments or divisions, but probably should be a direct report to the city manager or even to the mayor and council, but something, something like that. So that's to avoid any undue influence from any any of the other leadership, but also to make sure that there's some independence in terms of undertaking the studies and evaluation of where we are in terms of demographics and attitudes and what training might be needed. This is a difficult subject for a lot of people to deal with or to understand or to even empathize with based on our own life experiences, you know, but I'm looking at the picture of the council here and I see the most diverse council in in Montgomery County, including the county council. So, you know, I think that's something to be said. We've been, you know, some of us have been talking about this for a while. But I'm glad to see that we've gotten to this point. So I want to thank certainly the the GARE team for their hard work on this. And I think the report illustrates the effort and commitment that you have all put in. And I think that I'm and I'm grateful for that. I think one of the things, I think certainly we need to look inward first to our own staff and our own management and our own the the structure of our organization to see if things are, if if certain attitudes or biases or inequitable programs are just part of the organizational structure, not through some intent, but just the fact of the the organization over the years and how it's how it's come to be. We certainly need to look at things like hiring, but I think the other thing we need to look at, and first of all, we need to look at the impacts on our community. And I think, you know, starting with the Parks and Recreation, Parks, Recreation and Culture isn't such a bad place to start because I think that's our ma- major engagement with the community with all aspects of the community, socioeconomic and racial and ethnic interactions with with the community through our through our programs. And I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that the pandemic forced us to cancel many of those. many of those activities over the, well, since March, basically. And I think certainly if we look at community impacts and especially the impacts of the pandemic, we see that the lowest socioeconomic strata and the racial and ethnic, the same racial and ethnic groups that experience those impacts are probably the ones that have been less able to take advantage of the programs we've been able to offer when we did reintroduce them earlier in the summer. So but certainly we need to look at planning and code. We need to look at even public works and how we manage our facilities and everything else that, that everything, everything that the public has an opportunity to interact with the city and, and take advantage of. So I'm anxious to hear the rest of the report. I appreciate the great detail that you've all provided. And I certainly think that as, as Dennis suggested, there's a lot of ways to approach this, but I think the most important part of this is to identify a person to help lead us through this, understanding what our goals and objectives are going to be going forward. So it's not just about hiring. It's not just about the people at different levels of, of the staff from the, the top down. But it, it's about a lot of other aspects of, of how we operate as a city and how we serve the public, the, the Gaithersburg public. That's all I've got right now.
Thanks Mike. We've got Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me thank our presenters and our entire staff cohort participation group for your dedication and obvious passion for the issue, something I feel strongly also that we really need to be embracing and leading on. We tried to do a little bit of that during the past year during my term as President of the Maryland Municipal League, introducing these concepts and the importance of these discussions in places like Gaithersburg and many places throughout the state, not like Gaithersburg. And so it was a bit of an eye-opening experience for me to, you know, try to initiate some of those conversations with the diverse membership of our, our municipal league and the different types of cities and towns we have throughout the state. But it's something that I'm, I'm feel very strongly am committed to and that we need to continue to invest in. And so I'm glad that the leadership of our staff was able to make this happen with the participation in the Council of Governments cohort program. A, a concern that was sort of raised in the presentation that I have is about taking on too much and being too broad at the outset, because the truth is this issue touches everything we do and everything everybody does. Whether it's government or business or the nonprofit world or families or communities of faith. And this is an issue that touches everything and is everywhere. And so, you know, to me, it's very important that we not bite off more than we can chew at the outset and end up having it just be a symbolic effort. It's very important to me that what we do is concrete, measurable in terms of making progress on issues. And so I think what I'm hearing from our staff presentation, you know, when they say things like, we shouldn't do more than three initiatives, at least at first, but we should be very thoughtful about what those initiatives are and that we should focus on data. It's sort of to balance what other people might be feeling, but what I, I feel is this sort of frustration in wanting to do a lot, but knowing that if we try to do too much, we might end up being counterproductive. And data collection is not the most splashy thing to talk about, but I think we do need to have information in order to have the baseline and see, you know, what the demographics are, what the trends are, whether we're making progress or not making progress in certain fronts. Because, you know, there's, it's one thing to have sort of the big visionary view of how we can become a more racially equitable and socially just society and a, and a more racially equitable and socially just government versus the sort of daily, day-to-day practical work of making that happen. So I'm glad to see that as much as there is passion for this issue, there's a desire to kind of figure out how to, how to approach this in a way that's really going to be very impactful, understand the importance and the pervasiveness of this issue, but at the same time, be practical in the way that we can actually make a tangible impact. You know, the idea of a full-time position, it is a big statement. And, you know, Nate used the word pioneers and, and Councilmember Sesma kind of piggybacked off of that a bit, but part of my frustration is that, you know, this kind of stuff shouldn't be pioneering and yet it is in the world we live in. And so I guess I would be interested in having further discussion in the details of how we might be able to make that kind of a full-time position work. But I'd also be interested in more discussion of what other communities comparable in budget and size to ours are doing either in addition to or in lieu of hiring staff full-time or otherwise to address these issues. The city of Tacoma Park was mentioned as an example, smaller than us, but taking a lead on a lot of these issues. Mayor Stewart from Tacoma Park, as many of you know, has been the co-chair of the National League of Cities Racial Equity and Leadership Committee. And has done a lot of great work there. I've worked with her on some of the redlining programs that they've done to educate cities and towns about the ripple effects and, you know, incredible long-lasting impacts of, of redlining. And so I'd be interested to see not just what the larger counties that have the resources are doing, not even the bigger cities in Northern Virginia, but also the ones that a little bit more comparable to us are doing. You know, you know, it, just because something costs a lot of money in other cities and towns of our size aren't doing it, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. But we do have to think through the details and how this is going to work in a time of a bit of a budget crunch in the midst of COVID and the economic downturn. But at the same time, you know, the long-term priority and values and the importance that we place on this issue should be weighed against any, you know, short-term impacts on our budget and the importance of needing to do this in the long term. So I, I'm, I'm encouraged about the idea of having this discussion. Very appreciative of the detailed and thoughtful presentation and the participation of our staff in the cohort. And, you know, I, I'm just very focused on figuring out, how do we not let this be a bunch of speeches? Even a bunch of fancy press releases and policy statements that sit on a, a bookshelf and collect dust. But rather, how do we translate it into real tangible, measurable progress in our city, whether it's, you know, internal at first for ourselves and our staff as a place to start and lead by example. And eventually whether it impacts and how it impacts the outward-facing aspects of the city into the community as well. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we go on to the next part of the presentation? Go once, go on twice. Okay, Dennis, take it away.
Kevin and Nate, thanks. I also want to thank the members of, other members of the cohort, Tammy, Chris and Patrice. They did devote a lot of their time over the past year attending the meetings, but also doing a lot of effort outside of those meetings. They really did take a really good look at the data that we had available and trying to create new data too with regard to the parks programs. So with that, Brian, if you could bring up Chief Sharoka and Lieutenant Chris Vance. The chief and Lieutenant Vance will be presenting information on internal affairs promotional process and the department demographics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This presentation is a summary of all internal affairs complaints from 2015 through 2019. It will be followed by a presentation from Lieutenant Chris Vance relative to the police department's promotional process and demographics of the department. Lieutenant Vance is a member of the racial equity cohort that analyzed the promotional process and demographics. Thus making him best suited to provide that information this evening. If we could go to packet page eighteen. This presentation, we're going to start it with the internal affairs function on the next slide, please. The internal affairs function ensures that allegations and complaints of misconduct against employees are investigated and progressive supervised reaction is taken to ensure the integrity of the department is maintained and that our core values of service, integrity and respect are upheld. Every internal affairs investigation is conducted and evaluated on the specific facts of the situation being investigated. It also includes an assessment of aggravating and mitigating factors. Specifically, I review the officer's motivation and determine if the officer was acting in his or her best interest or the best interest of the public. I consider the officer's experience and can the judgment error be attributed to the officer's level of experience? I also evaluate whether the misconduct was intentional or unintentional. I review the officer's past record, both positive and negative, and the degree of harm caused by the officer's conduct. As a result of this and the department's disciplinary matrix, all IA cases receive equitable dispositions. Next slide, please. At the conclusion of an internal affairs investigation, the internal affairs detective will make factual recommendations as to whether the complaint is sustained, meaning there is sufficient evidence to support the allegation. Not sustained, there's insufficient evidence to prove or disprove the allegation. Or unfounded, meaning the allegation is false or not factual. Next slide, please. During the five-year period of 2015 through 2019, there were 11 civilian complaints, of which five resulted in a sustained finding. Three resulted in a not sustained finding and three were classified as unfounded. During the same five-year period, there were 15 supervisory complaints initiated without a civilian complaint wherein supervisors became aware of misconduct and reported it. Of the 15 supervisory complaints, 13 resulted in a sustained finding. One resulted in a not sustained finding. And one resulted in an abeyance classification, which is an indefinite suspension of the case due to the employee's separation of employment prior to case resolution. Next slide, please. In 2019, there was one citizen complaint on four officers that arose during a traffic stop. The complaint centered on two officers pointing their handguns at the three occupants of a vehicle. Although the investigation determined the pointing of the firearms was within policy, it did identify that one officer prematurely deactivated his body-worn camera near the end of the traffic stop, but not after it ended as required. This resulted in a written reprimand. The supervisor on the scene received a written reprimand for neglect of duty for failing to ensure the appropriate report for the pointing of the firearms was completed prior to the end of the shift during which the incident occurred. Next slide, please. In 2018, there were three internal affairs cases. The first case was a supervisory allegation of unbecome, unbecoming conduct that involved an inappropriate social media post that resulted in three days' suspension. I did want to touch quickly on the definition of unbecoming conduct by department policy because you're going to see that referenced several times throughout this presentation. Unbecoming conduct is defined as every employee shall conduct themselves at all times, both on and off duty in a manner which reflects most favorably on the department. The phrase reflects most favorably pertains to the perceptions of both citizens and other department employees. Conduct unbecoming shall include that which tends to bring the reputation of the department into disrepute or reflects discredit upon employee as a representative of the department. The second IA case was from a citizen alleging that he, alleging that he was assaulted by an officer while the two of them were on an elevator while inside of a building. The surveillance video on that elevator, unbeknownst to the officer as well as the complainant, showed that no altercation nor assault occurred. This resulted in an unfounded disposition. The third internal affairs supervisory initiated complaint occurred after a routine use of force review determined the language used by an officer and the tactic used by that same officer to get an arrestee from a prone position to a seated position was inconsistent with department training. This misconduct resulted in three days' suspension without pay. Next slide, please. In 2017, there were six internal affairs investigations that involved three citizen complaints and three supervisory complaints. The most serious complaint was from a city resident that alleged harassment by an entire shift over several years. The investigation clearly proved that no GPD officer ever initiated any contact with the complainant. And this complaint resulted in an unfounded finding. Next slide, please. In 2016, there were four IA complaints, two by citizens and two by supervisors. The unbecoming conduct case involved an off-duty officer working approved secondary employment that involved the officer engaging in personal conversation with a citizen. This allegation was determined to be not sustained. The violation of traffic laws was sustained and involved an officer exceeding the speed limit while traveling to work. This resulted in counseling and a police early warning system entry. Briefly, our police early warning system is a database where anytime a complaint is made on an officer or an officer is found to act outside of established department policy, an entry is made with a summary of the details. That enables me to take progressive administrative action in the future should there be a recurrence of similar reported behavior. The unbecoming conduct case on that list involved a former off-duty officer in a restaurant and bar that was under the influence of alcohol and acted inappropriately, which resulted in two days' suspension. The next case on neglect of duty is a companion case to that unbecoming conduct case I just mentioned, where the supervisor was also present at that location and failed to report the incident to me for the appropriate level of administrative action. So as a result, that was investigated and the supervisor received a one-day suspension for neglect of duty for failing to take the appropriate action that he had witnessed. Next slide, please. In 2015, there were nine IA complaints and eight of those nine complaints were initiated by supervisors. Due to the minor nature of the offenses and in furtherance of saving time, I'm not going to summarize each case in 2015 unless someone has a question about a particular case that's on that list. Next slide, please.
Chief, I had a quick question. Let me go back to that slide. These are complaints about Gaithersburg Police Department supervisors or complaints initiated by a supervisor?
The latter. Complaints initiated by a supervisor. The complaints are made on an officer and it's reported by a supervisor.
Okay.
Next slide, please. The summary of the 26 internal affairs cases are the following. Eighteen or 69% resulted in a sustained finding where the allegation was supported by sufficient evidence. Four or 15% resulted in a not sustained finding where there was insufficient evidence to prove or disprove the allegation. Three or 12% resulted in an unfounded finding where the allegation was false or not factual. And one or 4% resulted in, in an advanced disposition, which means the officer had separated employment prior to the resolution of the case. This concludes the presentation. Unless there are questions, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Vance for the next component.
Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. You know, as we were talking earlier about the importance of data, appreciate you going through in a methodical fashion and showing. appreciate you going through in a methodical fashion and showing, you know, for our benefit and the benefit of the public. Look, this is what happens, you know, when this is who is the source of a complaint. This is what happens when a complaint is filed and these are the, you know, the statistics on the results. I think that's important for the public to see that about our department and they can reach the reasonable conclusions from that data. Just a couple of quick questions. Without having to go too much into the weeds of department policy, can you give us just sort of a quick overview on how you ensure that penalties for offenses are sort of proportionate to the offense? You know, what warrants a one-day suspension versus a one-week suspension versus a firing offense? You know, at the other end of the extremes and just sort of give us a sense of how that is determined?
Sure. We have a general order. It's entitled the disciplinary disposition matrix. And it starts with the definition of a complaint, which is an allegation. If proved factual, it constitutes misconduct. So if any citizen alleges that misconduct occurred, the supervisor or any officer that receives that complaint must document the complaint and take it on its face value on a complaint against personnel report. That report is then forwarded to me and I provide it to an internal affairs case tracking number. That's the initial step for the investigation. And then to ensure that similar violations receive similar penalties across the board, that general order outlines on the matrix categories A through E. A is the least serious. E is the most serious. And E category offenses are for violations of criminal law or integrity violations in particular. There's automatic hearing board and termination cases if those prove factual. There's zero tolerance for either one of those two offenses in this department. And the others, B and C offenses are minor misconduct. D offenses are, well, it really starts out A usually is a counseling offense, the lowest level. A B offense is a written reprimand. A C offense is one to three suspension days. A D offense is four to 15 days suspension. And the offense, like I said, is an automatic hearing board for termination of employment if found guilty at that hearing board. That ensures across the board that in each one of these categories, like for neglected duty, you heard me talk about unbecoming conduct. That's listed in the matrix and that provides the range of penalty for that sustained violation. So every officer knows that if they're found, if there's a sustained complaint that they're involved in for that policy violation, they know exactly what the range of penalties are. Now, what I do then is I look at the officer's past performance record. If it's minor in nature and it's the first time that the officer's been involved in that type of misconduct and accepts responsibility for his transgression and doesn't make excuses, I tend to go on the lower level of the discipline. Because for me, discipline is not to punish anybody. Discipline is to correct inappropriate behavior to prevent it from occurring again in the future. And the biggest way for me to be assured that that's going to occur is when an officer accepts responsibility for the mistake and ensures me that they're going to do everything possible to make sure that they don't do it again.
Thanks, Chief. I don't know if you know this, you know, since I'm, you know, I'm sort of throwing this question out at you without any advance warning, but do you know if there's an independent third-party source for the categories in that matrix? How the categories were developed or is it just kind of use of experience and common sense to differentiate between the different categories in the matrix?
Prior to coming to Gaithersburg, previously, we had a similar program in place. And this was vetted out through the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association in the 1990s and have been updated since then. And also to tailor it and make it unique to the GPD, I received input from the command staff because I wanted it to be fair across the board and proportionate to any rule violations.
Great, thank you. And then I just have one last question. The data that you've shared with us going back to 2015, does that account for any processes of a officer who is the subject of a complaint appealing or challenging the decision by you? Or is that sort of something that's separate that's not captured by the data?
No, no, all complaints regardless of the outcome. If they meet the definition of a complaint, they're assigned an IA tracking number. So it's all captured within the data that I provided.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any item that, for example, showed that, you know, you sustained a complaint, but doesn't necessarily show that the officer might have appealed that elsewhere? Everything that's in the presentation that you've provided to us shows those were the final results of each of those incidents.
And it would include the few appeals that we have had. That's included in what I provided.
Okay, so if the appeal sustained a decision and it says sustained in your chart, that's showing that the appeal sustained it?
When you say appeal, are you talking about an appeal like to the circuit court?
I'm not trying to ask you a trick question here. I'm just trying to make sure that we understand that the data reflects. No, I'm not talking about necessarily the circuit court and I don't even, I don't want to get into that. But I do want to have a sense of, you know, the data that we're showing isn't, for lack of a better word, sort of undermined by the notion that, yes, there was a sustained, you know, complaint, but it may have been overruled elsewhere, even though the data in your presentation shows it was sustained. I don't think that's the case, but I just kind of want to confirm that for the public.
From 2015 to present, we've had no appeals.
That's a perfect answer to my question. Thank you.
Oriam, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. Since we were asking questions about the data that the chief shared. Chief, are any of the cases that you've mentioned in the past five years, any repeat offenders or are these all individual instances?
No, there are some repeat officers involved, you know, same officer involved in two or more cases.
Okay, and all of these officers are still employed in the force?
No, they're not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all.
Mike, go ahead.
Chief, it appears from this, the fact that we have more complaints filed by supervisors and the lack of appeals that there's a high level of internal and individual accountability. I assume that's an expectation by the command force in terms of the officers?
Absolutely. Years ago, accountability was top-down driven. I'm very proud of my command staff and the officers in this department to where we're at today because it's no longer, with very few exceptions, ever top-down driven. What we're seeing here now, and you see that reflected in the low number of complaints over the last five years, which has carried over into 2020 where we only had three. Two are from supervisors and one from the citizen. There is peer-to-peer accountability and self-accountability. Our officers understand that the public expects us to act professionally with restraint, even in spite of any provocation to the contrary. And that's a high standard, especially in uncertain and ambiguous circumstances. But what's unique here, what I'm so proud of with our department, is that officers also hold themselves to that same high public expectation to go out there and do what's right, to do it for the right reasons, do it regardless of who's right, and do it regardless of the unpopularity of their decisions. And when they're wrong, they understand the best thing to do is to acknowledge your wrongdoing and then we can move on. As long as it's not a criminal violation or an integrity violation, they're not going to lose their job. So when things go wrong in a police department, the first three questions I want answers to, I want to know what did the officer do? It's pretty easy nowadays to get those facts. Now, most of the time, just you ask the officer, they're going to tell the truth in this department. The second thing I want to know is what they, after I know what they did and I have all those facts, I want to know what did the officer intend to do? Was it well-intentioned in what he or she was doing? And then the third question I have is, did that officer have the ability to do otherwise based on the facts and circumstances that were immediately available to him or her at the time? The next questions are three for the supervisors. What did the supervisor know? When did the supervisor know it? And what did the supervisor do about it? And they don't get a free pass if they tell me they didn't know when it's something they should have known if they're actively engaged in supervision. So I'm really proud, and I said it before, I'm going to keep saying it, because we have good people. And when you hire good people, you can train them to be good police officers. And along the ways, and for many of you have been around for a while, we've lost them along the way because they couldn't meet that standard. So I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does, absolutely. And I guess the next question is, to what extent is, I mean, certainly if you hire quality people, you still have to reinforce certain behaviors and discourage others. Is this part of a systematic program of training in which they go through scenarios and different situations and learn how to more or less monitor each other and their own behavior in terms of interactions with the public? Or is it a combination of all of those things?
It's a combination of all of those things from the time that they're hired before they're actually, they sign that final offer letter of what those expectations are. It's certainly reiterated throughout their entire career. And, you know, actions speak louder than words. It's when, how are other officers treated when they do act inappropriately? How does myself, my command staff respond to those? It needs to be timely and it needs to be proportionate there. I mean, it's creating a culture of accountability and good people want to be held accountable. And this is reinforced in our promotional process. There's a category and you can hear this a bit later for special awards there. We recognize officers for it. When an officer has an accident, a traffic accident, first thing I'm looking at is the officer's written driver statement. Does the officer say, "I didn't see the car and I backed up into it"? You know, I'm going to go with the lower end on that disposition as opposed if I get a bunch of excuses on that. So I think it's all of that setting the expectation and holding everybody accountable for their actions, and that starts with me, no different. I wrecked a car and got a written reprimand, you know, so I'm no different. And that's what matters, that we're all treated the same regardless of our rank.
Do you think the behavior and the accountability is influenced by the fact that everybody has to have a body cam now? Or would their behavior would be exclusive of that?
You know, I'd be speculating, but what can go on is, you know, we didn't have body worn cameras in 2015.
Right.
I gave the summary on that. And it still goes back to if you're really principally driven and you understand how, as a police officer, our actions have a profound impact on people's lives, good or bad. And since I know we have very good officers who are good human beings first, I believe, you know, I don't have the data to support it, but I do believe that these officers would still be out there doing a very difficult job to the best of their ability with or without the cameras. I do think that cameras do, as human nature is a tendency, it alters your behavior. However, over time, we've all become so used to these cameras, we're less aware of that runs, it's just human nature. You know, early on, it was, we had a challenge to remember to turn them on in a high stressful situation. I'm not seeing it happening now where officers aren't activating the camera because it's become second nature. And as a result, I don't, I think now, in many cases, especially under stress, they don't even realize that that camera is running.
Thanks. Thank you.
Brian.
Yeah, I just had one additional question and point to make, Chief. Since we're having this discussion in the context of a broader work session about racial equity, I just wanted to sort of clarify. The data that you're showing us is data of all complaints total, for any reason, for each of these years against an officer, not just, you know, some subset of complaints related to, you know, racial prejudice issues or other allegations of that effect, right? So.
Yes, this is all complaints.
Whether or not it has anything to do with racial equity?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So I mean, I think that's an important point to make as well. And I did just want to piggyback off of what you said earlier and say that, you know, I think we're all proud of our department and we like to hold it up as an example in these very challenging and difficult times in our country. And, you know, just recently at the annual Public Safety Awards hosted by the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce, it was, of course, a virtual ceremony this year. Couple of our officers were recognized for their deserved accomplishments, including, you know, some really incredible courage in emergency situations. And, you know, so I think we need to acknowledge all the good that our department is doing and that our city government is encouraging our department to do by being a voice for embracing our diverse communities, having more multilingual communications, doing more community policing, having, you know, being one of the first in the region to have every officer wear a body cam, doing de-escalation training and all the other things that you and your staff are doing. Of course, you know, as I think I've heard you say before, every community is just, you know, one incident away, God forbid, you know, from it all changing. And every community, no matter how much progress it has made and continues to make, has work to do on the front of racial equity in policing and in many other platforms where we operate. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that we appreciate you and your department and all the officers who put their lives on the line. And, you know, for the most part, we've been really fortunate and proud of our great department, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to still try to make things better as we explore what, you know, what the discussion about racial equity means for how we can improve ourselves.
All right, let's have Lieutenant Vance take us through the next part of the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to present this information to you. Tonight, I'll review our promotional process to explain what our competitive promotional process consists of and what steps are involved to ensure equitable outcomes. Additionally, I will review various demographic personnel data to show you promotional process results, current demographics of our supervisors, sworn officers, recent hires, and steps we are taking to focus the department's diversity and equity. The police department has a three-step competitive promotional process that determines who will be promoted and in what order. It is important to understand that our promotional process dictates our promotions. Therefore, it is our priority to provide a process that is fair, equitable, and based on competency to be a supervisor. The police department runs a promotional process every two years to establish a rank order promotion list that the chief will use over the course of the next two years to promote from. Our promotional process is administered and proctored by a third-party consultant who was a subject matter expert in delivering fair and equitable police promotional processes. The first step is in the process is we publish a notification of the upcoming process. Only officers who have at least one year in an eligible rank can participate. That means only police officer threes can test for the rank of corporal and corporals can only test for the rank of sergeant. Eligible officers can submit a request for promotional consideration to notify the department that they are participating in the process. Next slide, please. The promotional process consists of three components. First is the written test. The test questions come directly from department policies and state and local laws. The test questions are determined by a survey of existing supervisors that are asked two questions. First, how often a supervisor uses a specific policy or law? And secondly, how important is that policy or law for the supervisor to know? The survey then uses the answers to determine the high-value policies and laws to test from. This makes the written test valid as an objective measurement of knowledge necessary for policies and laws rather than a random quiz of materials. The second step is a blind resume. Officers are provided with specific instructions on how to write the resume so that there's no indication of gender, name, race, or ethnicity of the officer. so that there's no indication of gender, name, race, or ethnicity of the officer in the resume. The resume is graded by a panel of supervisors from other agencies from Maryland that have been trained and tested by the consultant to score the resumes according to an established matrix. The third step is a structured interview. The structured interview is graded by another panel of supervisors from other agencies in Maryland. The three-person panel is established to ensure that at least two members of the panel are from minority populations. The panel also is trained and tested by the consultant to score each interview according to a strict matrix to ensure that the objective measurements of the answers are achieved. The results of each component of the process establishes a final score for each candidate. The scores are ranked from the highest amount of points to the lowest, and that determines the ranking list. Again, those results establish the promotional list that will be used for the next two years. Next slide, please. The Police Department has run three promotional processes since 2014. The processes occurred in 2014, 16, and 18. During that time, 29 officers have participated in the promotional processes, which resulted in 20 officers being promoted from those lists. Of those participants, 71.4% of the white males that participated in the process were promoted off those lists. 100% of the white females and 100% of the Hispanic or Latino males that participated were promoted. 0% of the Hispanic females were promoted, while 66.7% of the black males that participated in the process were promoted. And 50% of other race males were promoted. Next slide, please. To look at this from a different angle, the demographics of those 20 promotions were 50% of the promotions were white males, 10% of the promotions were white females, 15% of those promotions were Hispanic or Latino males, 20% of those promotions were black males, and 5% of those promotions were other race males. Next slide, please. This has led to the current demographics of our 18 supervisors in the department. Of those 18 supervisors, 55.6% of the supervisors are white males, 5.6% of our supervisors are white females, 22.2% of the supervisors are black males, 11.1% of the supervisors are Hispanic or Latino males, and 5.6% of the supervisors are other race males. Next slide, please. Since we promote 100% from within the organization, it's important to look at the current demographics of our sworn officers to determine if our promotional outcomes are equitable. In doing that, we see that 72.1% of our officers are white, 11.5% of our officers are black. Also, 11.5% of our officers are Hispanic or Latino, 1.6% of our officers are Asian, and 3.3% of our officers self-identify as other race. Next slide, please. In order to determine where we are going as an organization and how we are representing our community, it's also important to look at the demographics of our recent hires. In 2019 and 2020, we have hired 12 officers. The demographics of those hires are 50% were white male, 8.3% are white females, 16.7% are Hispanic or Latino males, and 25% are Hispanic or Latino females. As you know, police recruitment and hiring is extremely challenging in today's era. Police recruitment is down nationally over 60%. Although we are proud of the number of hires that we've made in the last two years, we are most proud of the quality of people that we are hiring. Our hiring process focuses on competency and character, which sets the base for the high-quality decision-makings in the field and for our future leaders in the department. Next slide, please. The department is fully committed to hiring and promoting officers that represent the diversity of Gaithersburg community. To achieve this, we cannot have a singular approach that operates in a recruitment silo. The Gaithersburg Police Department instills its focus on diversity and equity into all of our programs, operations, decisions, actions. And some of the most common are our cadet program. This is where we can recruit younger people that are not 21 years old yet. And it's focusing on recruiting locally. Additionally, we have officers that are and have been professors at Montgomery College, University of Maryland, Shady Grove, which also assists us in developing relationships there and recruiting from those institutions. One of the biggest things that we do is operationally, we we focus on developing relationships in the community. Each of our officers are recruiters. The best way to recruit locally is to conduct ourselves professionally with discipline at all times and treat everybody with dignity and respect. For instance, one of our young officers that was just released from field training was actually recruited when he was pulled over by a city police officer for a minor traffic violation. We also look for opportunities to build relationships with people critical of the police actions. After the murder of George Floyd, we had five different protests within the city limits. Our focus during each of those protests was to develop relationships with the organizers and participants so we could work together in the future. Those protests started a monthly meeting between us and protest organizers to discuss various police issues. For instance, this month, we are bringing those organizers in to participate in police use of force scenario training to show them how we train our officers. I would like to share one unique story that I think Gaithersburg has that no other agency has. During one of our protests, we had an officer at a protest that were talking and they realized that they live very close to each other. That actually resulted in an officer having the protester and his family over to his house that weekend for a barbecue. In our five protests, we had zero arrests, zero uses of force, no damaged property, and one family barbecue. Those are the stats that we are very proud of and could not have happened if we weren't out there trying to develop relationships. Another component that's not listed in the slide is very critical for us, and that's retention. That's because we have great officers. I don't believe, I do believe that we have the best officers of any agency in the area. I believe definitely that it's a credit to our recruitment, hiring, and training programs and our supervisors' leadership. We now have to focus our attention on keeping those great officers, not only in the profession, but in the city for the duration of their careers. One final step that we do to ensure equity within the departments is something that I learned in the racial equity cohort, is to continue to collect and analyze demographic data similar to what was presented tonight. By participating in the racial equity cohort for the past year, I am confident that we will be able to analyze this data and other police issues appropriately through racial equity lens. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Chris, Chief Lieutenant, thank you guys very much for the presentation. You know, as my colleague said, we're proud of the department. We're very proud of your leadership. Feel like what you guys go out and do in our community represents the values of the community, the values of our local government, the values of this council. And just one suggestion that in the future, you add to the infographics something that that tracks the family barbecues because that's a great stat.
Will do.
Thanks, Chris. Loriann, please. Go ahead.
Well, I think Mike was, Mike raised his hand first. Oh, it's okay. All right. Thank you, sir. So thank you guys again. As Lieutenant Vance mentioned, you guys have been really supportive and engaged with the community all summer long since June, since we had our first protest. Even when I did my community listening session, you guys were available and all of the events have been peaceful within our city. So I really appreciate that reputation that we've continued to have throughout this challenging time. I did want to ask about some of the data that I did see in the promotions. One thing I did notice that there weren't any black women in our department. I don't know if that's new. I know that we've had some recent departures. So I don't know who's left maybe in the past year. So I wanted to get some feedback on that aspect and.
Yeah, we have never had a black female officer in our department. And that's something that we have, we've recognized for some time, and it's something that we are trying to change. You know, we're going out, we're recruiting at a different variety of events, career fairs, college fairs, and things like that. Our hope was with the cadet program, you know, maybe the cadet program will fill that 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 position at some point. But it's definitely something that's on our radar and we're trying to change.
And so I'm wondering if this is something you're also working with Kim's department, Department of Human Resources about, you know, more targeted outreach and recruitment efforts. We've mentioned this during the discussions about procurement and, you know, are we going to, are we actively seeking these sorts of populations and how are we advertising for announcements? So I know that there's some discussions about.
Yeah, we're certainly always looking for ideas. And, you know, some of the things that we do, we publish all of our open processes in the National Minority Update, which publicizes like a career fair and online publication for minorities to go to to find out what what positions are open. We've done college fairs down in Virginia Beach, in Prince George's County, and, you know, all over Frederick. So we're trying a bunch of different things and certainly we're, you know, we're always trying to look to try something new and see if it works. So we're definitely willing to try different things.
And I see that in the most recent promotions. We have 71% were white males. And then even in the most recent hires, it looks like white males are overly represented. And so what do you attribute that to? Is this just not a career that diverse populations are interested in or are we not attracting diverse candidates?
I think nationally, when you look at attitudes towards police and law enforcement, there is more distrust in minority communities towards the police nationally. And I think that affects our ability to recruit in some of those populations. So that's why we really focus on, you know, our strategies is build relationships in our community and recruit locally. And so we are focusing on even people that distrust us, you know, to reach out, develop relationships. This is why the SRO program is so important with Officer Blackman at a Gaithersburg High School because he's making connections. He's developing relationships with people with kids in that school so that, you know what, maybe they can go, you know what, I didn't think about being a police officer, but you know what, Officer Blackman has been there for me. He's a great guy. And, you know, maybe it's something I'll look into. And then maybe, you know, they can attach on to our cadet program. And then in three years, four years, when they're eligible, that's how it works, you know. And so so it's all about developing relationships locally. We can't really, we can't really influence national attitudes about policing in America. We can only do what we do. We have to build relationships here so that everybody trusts us and views us as legitimate. And if they, if someone views an organization as trustworthy and they view them as legitimate, they're more likely to want to go work for that organization.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was, you know, perceptions or if it was, you know, are some people having trouble with testing or completing the training or some other factors that.
We have, we have a high attrition rate in our, in our hiring process from when people apply to the point where they get through all the steps, you know. When they apply, they have the written test, they have the physical agility test, which is based on the Cooper Institute standards, which is a national kind of standard. And then, you know, then the next step is the written interview. And the interview is specifically geared to really figure out the person's, not their competency and like how they can do their job, but just what's their demeanor? What are they going to default to? You know, we don't want them to give us answers based on our training and experience because they haven't been through it yet. But how are they, what are they going to default to? Are they going to default to, hey, this is the situation I'm in, I'm going to default to my authority and yell commands at the person? Or am I going to negotiate and de-escalate? You know, that's what we're looking for in the written part. Then the background part, I mean, we have a high attrition rate in the background. And that's not specific to any racial or ethnic group. It's pretty universal. All ethnic groups, we just have, you know, a lot of people cannot get through our very stringent background. We have very high standards in the quality of person. We're not going to compromise our quality of officer. You know, and when it comes down to it, we just typically have more white males applying than any other group. And so you may have the same attrition rate along the way, but there's going to be more of them at the end.
Thank you for that. I'm also noticing that we don't have a lot of women in leadership, period. And so I know that you guys are using a third-party consultancy. Is this the same consulting organization you've used for quite some time and?
Yes, for promotions, yes. She has experience, you know, that was basically what she did in her career. And now she has this consulting company and, you know, she's, she's, she's been very beneficial to us to be able to provide a promotion process that is very fair and equitable. And, you know, unfortunately, we just recently had a Latino female resign. You know, that was a corporal, a supervisor in our department, so.
Thank you. So I had a question about the consultant since you brought that up. How was the consultant chosen and did it go through our procurement process or is this a different process?
We've been using her and this consultant basically for probably going back to 2012, I believe. And I'm not sure of the procurement things that were going on back then, but I know that because of her specialty and specifically police promotional promotional processes and that she understands our process, that she's been with our for so long, that's why we continue to use her.
And are there other jurisdictions that use this consultant for promotion?
There are other agencies that use her. I'm not sure of which agencies are using her currently.
And what's the name of the consultancy?
I don't know. She has, it's, it's a, it's a person that has that experience. I don't know if there's actually a company that she has. It's just one person that she consults with.
House member says, if it helps, after the written test and after the third component, which is the oral interview, there's a survey that's provided to each of the promotional candidates. Since 2012, every promotional candidate that participated in the process checked it off that it was a fair process and it was indicative of success for the rank being sought in the promotional process. I have received no negative feedback relative to this consultant or to the fairness and that the testing mechanisms that are used are relevant for the candidate, if they were to be promoted, to be successful in the higher position. This promotional consultant was formerly the Promotional Testing Division Commander for the Maryland State Police. Once she retired as a captain from running promotional process for the state police, we hired her here in a consulting basis. And the feedback that we receive each and every year from our officers that are participated in the process is that it's a fair process.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have for now.
Okay, we'll go to Mike.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Lieutenant. I guess I would remind everybody that we have a police station named after an officer who came up through the ranks in Gaithersburg. Her name was Mary Ann Viverette. She was the police chief for quite a long time, one of the first female chiefs in, I think. She was the police chief for quite a long time, one of the first female chiefs in, I think, in Montgomery County, so. And probably the state of Maryland. She actually was president of the ICP for a year and now is continuing to consult law enforcement. We've also lost recently through retirements and I guess the resignation of a couple of female supervisors. But my question was on page, packet page thirty-three, when you show us the demographics of the department, sixty-one sworn officers, the only information that's not included there is the break, the gender breakdown of the force. So I was wondering if you could tell us what that is.
I, I don't have that information right now available. I can research that and pull that up and get that information back to you as soon as possible.
I'm just, just overall, you've got sixty-one officers, how many approximately are? What's the, is it fifty-fifty? I, I don't think it's fifty-fifty. I think it's. You want to?
Seven female officers and three Hispanic female officers.
So is that ten altogether?
One altogether, ten female.
Okay, thank you. That, that was really, I think you've provided a very, you know, it's, I think the proof in a way is in the pudding and we look at our officers and the quality of the officers we have. I, I think we'd have to say that we, we probably have a pretty strong program in terms of recruitment and, and recruiting the highest quality. And also, I imagine, you know, once you have the pool of officers, then that's who you promote from. It's all of the promotions are internal. So I think certainly we, I would be interested to see learn more about the plans for outreach and recruitment, especially to underrepresented racial and ethnic minorities. I know it's difficult. It's difficult to recruit officers in general throughout the United States. This isn't a, this isn't a problem that's, that only Gaithersburg faces, but it would be interesting to see what other approaches we might undertake to do that. So that's really all I have right now. So thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Rob. And then Neil after.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief and Chris, for the presentation. It provided a lot of good information. One area that, that I would ask you to expand upon, and I don't know which one of you this is, this would fall under, is you talked about promotions, but could you share some information about training, workforce development, mentorship, things that occur outside of the promotion process or in addition to the promotion process to develop our officers, retain our officers, and, and ultimately train them for the next level?
Certainly, I can talk about that. When they go to the academy, they, they go to the academy for six and a half months. And when they come out of the academy, they're in field training for a minimum of three months. And that's day-to-day, you literally, you have an officer over your shoulder, watching everything that you're doing, doing, you know, on-the-job training and, and kind of bridging that gap from what you learned in the academy to how to actually apply it properly onto the street. And, and not only is it developing the officers that, so that they understand how to do things procedurally the correct way, it's, it's, that's the point where we really get a hold of them and, and start to develop a, a culture, a culture, an organizational culture of ownership and wanting to come out here and do the right thing. And that's where, you know, officers learn that, you know, that if you make a mistake, you're, you know, this is a very challenging job. You're going to make mistakes. Sometimes you're going to make a bad decision. And the worst thing that we can do is not make, make, you know, not own it and make excuses for it because you're not going to get any better by doing that. Ongoing training that we do, every year we have TASER training. And it's not, a very small component of it is actually TASER. We have, we incorporate into that training, de-escalation training. We do scenarios training in, in, in with that. We do in custody death prevention so that officers understand how to take someone, a resisting person that's fighting us, how to take them into custody without endangering them physically with like back pressure and what to look for medically that someone's in, in having, having medical issues during an in custody situation and how to, how to resolve that properly. How to transition from an apprehension to all of a sudden first, you know, first aid and CPR. That's not just necessarily self-evident, you know, we've seen in other parts of the country where officers kind of hesitate and, and, you know, don't do that. With the promotions, you know, we, we, you know, we, we start out, we have, you know, you don't just become a, you know, you're a line officer and then you're supervisor. You're, you're a corporal, which you're, you're kind of like, you have your foot in both worlds, you're a line officer and you're supervisor. So we look at time to really mentor the corporals on how to lead, how to supervise, what's our expectations so that they fully understand what the left and right boundaries are and, and what the, the, the command and the community's expectations of our officers and how to supervise our officers so that the officers are putting themselves in a position to be successful and not putting us in this, in the whole organization in the city in a position to not be successful. So it's, you know, it, it's, that's just a mentoring program that starts there. And then it also with, with supervisors, you know, last year, probably about a year and a half ago, we did, you know, ownership training, just specifically talking about how to be, you know, how to own what we're doing and not make excuses for anything. And that was a very, you know, seems like a simple comp, you know, concept, but if you have ownership, you, you very rarely need accountability because everyone's going to hold themselves accountable. And we've actually seen, that was a game changer for our organization, where, where just, it changed the culture and made it just, just even better. And, you know, so it's, it's just constantly working with training, with mentoring, coaching. When people make mistakes, you know, not, not coming down and hammering them necessarily, but coaching and mentoring and, and so that they, they change their behavior and they don't make the same mistakes twice.
About like retention incentives, do any of the officers take advantage of the education reimbursed?
Yes, it, it can be challenging. It can be challenging to, to, you know, go to school and, and work, especially the odd schedules that we have, you know, either work in midnights or, you know, evenings or, you know, so. But we certainly, we have officers taking advantage of that. You know, I know several officers have gone to get their master's degree on that program. You know, we have officers that are, you know, you know, another way that we can, we can, you know, try to give opportunities within the organization, you know, or with K nine. You know, that's, that's some, that's a great goal. We have an officer who, who just, he's just started K nine training as a handler. You know, this, this is a guy, he just always wanted to be a K nine officer and he always came out here and that was his goal, to be a K nine officer. And he came out here every single night and just worked his butt off and, and really just, you know, he was a, a former officer of the year. He just did great things and his whole focus was that's what he wanted to be. He wanted to be a K nine officer. So, you know, having street crimes unit, having the community service officer, the detectives, opportunities within the agency is, is very, very helpful to kind of your high-growth need officers that need a different change every once in a while. We'll go to Neil.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you for the presentation, everyone. I have a question on the opposite side of some of the graphs that you showed us, which is I'm concerned about what's happening on the attrition side. You mentioned, I think Lieutenant Vance, that the, that the department has a relatively high attrition rate or at least higher than you would be comfortable with. And it's my understanding that in the current climate of national concern over over policing, that there's been some increase in officers voluntarily leaving the force. Are you seeing that? Are you seeing that among specific, specific demographic groups? And, you know, what are your thoughts on stemming that going forward?
Well, I think, you know, we've, we've done studies on attrition in the past with our agency and, and since two thousand and ten, usually we average around four officers that either retire or leave or whatever, for whatever reason, that, that leave, leave the city. I had four officers a year. When you look at national standards of police departments, fifty officers, still a hundred, we're actually right in the, the national standard on that. I will tell you that since June, we've had two officers leave law enforcement altogether suddenly that weren't planning to. We have another officer that is retiring at the beginning of next month. So there's definitely some concerns of officers about, about this profession. And, you know, I, I think we're just looking for opportunities just to, you know, provide officers with good solid training, making sure that we're hiring the right officers, good solid training, develop the right culture and, and give them opportunities to come out here and, and, and fulfill their, their, their needs as far as employees and, and, and police officers. So that's what we're trying to do, is just, you know, keep the morale high and, and go out there and do our jobs.
All right, thank you. I think I'm familiar with both officers who recently left the force quickly. So I was, because I don't know all of your officers, I was just concerned if that was just the tip of the iceberg, but I'm a little bit more reassured. And I'll tell you, I grew up in Philadelphia where the policing, the police department's attitude was maybe slightly different than it is here in Gaithersburg. Also got to know a number of police officers when I lived in California in the Silicon Valley area. And I have to say, they were great and you guys are even better. It's, I'm very impressed with the, the work of the Gaithersburg Police Department and the officers and and leadership that I've gotten to know over the time I've been on the council. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, I don't see any hands raised and, and we're, we're only halfway through the presentations at this point. So I want to, I want to thank Chief, Chief Siroka, Lieutenant Vance and Dennis, take it away.
Thanks, Chief and Lieutenant Vance, and thank all the other staff who worked on putting together the data. I know there are a lot of people behind the scenes too, that are helping out, create this data and put it forth. With that, Brian, can you bring, bring up Malane Richards? Malane will provide an update on the city's efforts to look at diversity in our procurement vendor pool.
Welcome, you are muted right now, Malane.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and, and city council members.
And welcome.
Thank you. As Dennis alluded to, my name is Malane Richards. I'm the chief procurement officer for the city. Next slide. This slide depicts the number of overall vendors the city has awarded purchase orders to, to date. This number does not encompass awards of five thousand dollars or less, as these are purchases that are made via authorized employee P-card holders versus awarded on a PO. Our future goal will be to track P-card, P-cards, P-cards awarded by vendor as well. Next slide. On July first, I had the opportunity to meet with Dennis and our prior Director of Finance, Rafu, to discuss best approach to collecting supplier diversity information, as well as vendor awardee data and information for the city moving forward. The prior slide depicted the number of overall vendors, active and inactive, currently in our Munis accounting system. Our inactive number encompasses roughly five hundred vendors the city has not awarded POs to in the past year. I opted to include this data in, in our supplier diversity tracking to provide historic information as to a, a number of awards made and ethnicity groups awarded. The city has collected vendor data in previous years solely by requesting vendors provide their W nine. This form, however, doesn't track point of contact information, business entity data, awardee data such as small business, veteran-owned, women-owned, et cetera. On July sixth, we completed our best approach assessment of how to track vendor diversity awards for the city going forward. Next slide, please. We collectively determined that there were several avenues we could take to determine the classification type of the city's awards, awarded projects in the past. E-Maryland Marketplace requires vendors to indicate whether they are enrolled as a veteran-owned, small business entity enterprise, minority or minority enterprise. We also decided we can also create a city vendor registration form, which will allow us to collect all of, all of the information on our existing city vendors as well. This form will be, will, will require our vendors to indicate whether they are minority-owned enterprise. Next slide. The System of Award Management, SAM.gov, and the Office of Minority Business Enterprises are, are also databases which track supplier diversity information. But currently, the city does not require vendors to be registered in either of these databases. Next slide. On July sixth, we created a vendor registration form, which was designed to collect data, data, to, to, to collect basic data, yet necessary information on all city vendors. Contact information, name, address, business entity information. And on July fourteenth, we actively began issuing new vendor registrations forms to all vendors in our Munis system. The implementation of the vendor registration form has been the most effective way of collecting city dat, city awardee data and information. Given the pace with which we cut, given the pace with which the data collected has been received, we estimate by the end of November twenty twenty, we'll have all accurate accounting information in Munis to collect city vendor data moving forward. The final goal will be to work with our, with Munis to design an automated report system that will allow authorized Munis users to access supplier diversity and award data moving forward. Next slide. At the end of this process, the city will have full records, past and present, of purchase orders awarded under each business entity classification listed here. Yearly, the procurement department will be responsible for keeping Munis up to date with all of our vendor information. Next slide. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much for the presentation and, and I believe it's your first time before the mayor and council for, for one of our meetings. So we, you know, welcome aboard and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's obviously when we're talking about upwards of four thousand vendors, it's a big task that, that we're dealing with. And, and I guess we're not really going to know what we want to do until we, we have a sense of, you know, who we're doing business with. And, and, and at that point, you know, we'll, we could say either this is, this is meeting our goals or, 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 or maybe we need to take some other step or whatever. But, but what we need first is the information. So I appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Rabu, then Lorian after Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's good information. Just one question is, the, the categories that you seem to track with the federal categories for the, the, I would say for Part Nineteen organizations.
Correct.
Does, does that mean that our vendors are required to register in SAM? Or does Maryland have its own categories that track with those categories as well? And if, go on, then I'll.
So E-Maryland does request that vendors provide small business information. It's not required though. The boxes are there, but not required.
Okay.
So that's, go ahead.
So we'd be collecting data on, on those that, that are in SAM or those that have volunteered information in, in, in the Maryland system as well?
So just to give a little history, my entire background is federal government. So local government is new to me. Federal government, we're constantly audited. This is information that we have to track. And on that note, there's actually, the federal government has funding set aside for these business entities. As I become acclimated with the city, I, my int- As I become acclimated with the city, my intent is to work closely with Tanisha Riley to give me some educating points as to what's going to be required for local government here. I have ideas, but I want to make sure that they are attributable to what we're going to be tracking moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. And if you didn't know, you've got two procurement bubbas on the council and me and Ryan. And he's working for a federal contractor now, so he's aspiring.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, Loriann first and then Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you. Is it Malane?
Malane, yes.
Malane, thank you, Malane, for that presentation. We've all had questions about how we're spending our money, who we're spending it with. And with Rockville as our neighboring jurisdiction, they've been a little more progressive with actually creating a minority-owned program. So if you haven't had a chance to review that, it may be a good reference. I'm glad that the form has been updated and will now track the benchmarks or it's at least creating the benchmarks for us to actually evaluate how we do business and where we're spending our resources. I did want to ask about the woman and minority-owned. Are those all included in one false swoop? Or are we separating women from minority-owned?
I'm separating them, women-owned and minority-owned businesses.
Okay, I didn't know if I saw the box on the form, on actual application. I thought I just saw a minority-owned checkbox. I just wanted to see how deep we're exploring the data.
Yes, it's going to be separated if it's not already. So I don't know what slide that was, but it should definitely be separated.
Okay, it was the one where this sample application was included. Forgot the page number.
Page 42.
Yes.
And we should have a women-owned box too there. If it's not there, I will add it there. There it is. That'd be there. So yes, we're tracking those separately. So the women-owned is in the same box as the same column as the minority-owned.
Okay. And so I, I'm wondering, you know, I know that each department has, you know, does procurement, do all of the departments have to go through you to solicit businesses to?
So, so just so I give everybody a little history, I started with the city in June, June 15th.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. And when I came on board, I will say two things, breath of fresh air. Everyone is extremely friendly. And I say that in the context of everyone is very knowledgeable in their own right of procurement. And everyone has an idea of how procurement should be, right? So one of the things that I want to be instrumental in is what's best for the city and how will that look going forward, right? In order to do that, first day, Ms. Tanisha Riley, it's a task, you know. So one of the things that, to answer your question, I found that several departments do things differently, right? I'd like everyone to do things uniformly.
Yes.
But how we get there is a different question, right? And certainly, certainly steps involved to get us there.
Okay, well, I appreciate that reflection and look forward to hearing more about how we can get everyone on the same page. Because if we have everyone doing different things, it's going to be hard to track baseline data and see where improvements need to be made. So that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, who's next? Thanks, Loriann. Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Malane, and welcome. As Rob said, he and I are both procurement lawyers. So we're going to apologize in advance for being annoying on this topic. But, you know, I mean, I think that your approach in terms of data gathering is very straightforward, simple, makes a lot of sense. You don't have to think about all the complicated ways to develop the technical approach to doing a cross-reference with the Maryland E. Marketplace database or the SAM database. And you just send out the form to all the people on our vendor list and any future vendors that come along. Seems like a pretty easy way to collect the data. And it will take a little time, obviously, to get it back and input it, but it shouldn't be too bad. And Loriann raised an interesting point about the fact that, you know, there's a distinction between, obviously, woman-owned and minority-owned, which is pretty obvious to anybody who's been involved in federal contracting set-asides. But as you well know, like, at the state level, the MBE program actually defines minority to include a woman. So basically, it just uses the word minority as an umbrella term. And if we're not kind of differentiating and, you know, pulling out these designations in this data in our forums and in our collecting, there is the opportunity to miss that important granular level. But at the same time, we can't be too granular. I mean, we're not the federal government. We don't have the resources of the federal government or the state government or even the county to be able to, you know, be creating really fine-tuned definitions or auditing the data at that level. I think at this point, we just need to be in a data gathering posture, get as much as we can work with. If in the future, as the mayor said, we decide we want to develop some program, we're going to have to vet it to make sure we have the legal authority to do it, whatever it is, and what our goals will be if we want to do it. And at that point, you know, if we want to create some certification processes or auditing processes going forward from that point, we can think about what resources and ability we have to do that. But yeah, it seems to me like, you know, at this point, just get the basic data that we can, you know. And if somebody identifies as a woman-owned business or a minority-owned business or a veteran-owned business, whether or not they do any federal government contracting and have any account in SAM shouldn't really matter. And, you know, we don't have to figure out if they meet certain really granular definitions and federal regulations of a woman-owned business or minority-owned business. I think companies are sophisticated enough to be able to determine whether they can fairly call themselves a minority-owned business or a veteran-owned business or a woman-owned business just for purposes of our data collection. So I don't think we need to worry too much about that at this point. We should just get the data, see what it tells us, and then we can figure out if we want to get more granular down the road. But to Rob's point, I mean, there may well be a lot of vendors who do business with the state or local governments who will never do federal contracting and therefore won't have a SAM account. We do advertise on the E. Maryland Marketplace, so I imagine we get a lot of folks who do state contracting. But there's no guarantee that every single entity that's going to bid on our contracts is going to be an entity that does state contracting either. And as you said, the information is voluntary at the state level anyway. So anyway, bottom line is, I think you're taking the right approach, balancing the resources and the ability that we have to collect data. We can't get super complicated yet at this point. So I'm supportive of the approach. And it sounds like we should be able to have reporting and analysis of the data within the next six months or so, which would be great.
Absolutely. I think you hit the nail on the head there. It's going to be important simply to be able to answer the question of what kind of data are we collecting right now? We're unable to do that.
Mike, go right ahead.
So Malane, welcome to the city. And I'm glad that you had an opportunity to meet our two procurement experts on the council here. I'm also a fed still. I don't do procurement other than hiring people. So, and so I know that the feds have a certain system. And one, you know, when we're looking for hiring, there's often a veterans' preference in hiring to retain people or people who have been riffed or moved from other federal agencies occasionally. That's a preference. So once we have all this data, what is our, how do we use it then? For example, how do the feds use it? Do they, you know, is there a set aside for these minority and women-owned businesses? Is there a scoring criteria that's used to compare or to weigh competitive proposals in which there's an additional score? Yeah, I know, I kind of know these answers, but I'm asking Malane to say this, to explain this to the public. So once we have this information about minority and women and veteran-owned businesses and vendors, how do we use it in the procurement process? Do we use it in every process or do we use it in certain processes? Or can you give us an idea of the kinds of things that you think we might end up, you know, in the directions we might end up going? Once we have.
So I'll answer this this way. A great majority of the awards here for the city, most of the times we do waivers for, right? Not enough time to get through the procurement process. And my goal is to, one, let's make some time for the procurement process. And in order to do that, you know, we have a procurement email address where daily we get inquiries from citizens. Hey, how do I get on your vendor approval list? Well, we don't have a vendor approval list, right? This is something we're working towards. There are a lot of vendors that want to do business with the city and don't know how, right? So collecting this data would help us do that. I can't compare it to the federal government because there's several programs within the federal government that allow us to, it's almost mandated. The federal government mandates that you set aside certain awards for certain business classes, right? Local, again, my goal moving forward is to have a very in-depth conversation with Ms. Riley to help me, educate me on how we want the city's procurement to look moving forward. I can tell you my inbox is filled daily with inquiries as to how do I do business with the city of Gaithersburg? And my answers have been, we're working on a process now to collect vendor data information to be able to answer your question, Michael. So it's a work in process. I cannot compare it to how the federal government does business because it's a different animal in itself, if you will.
Okay, that's fair enough. But thank you very much. And again, welcome. And thank you for the presentation.
Malane, I had a quick question about what Michael just mentioned. So I know that the county's procurement department, they actually do, they just had a series of events last week that they hosted, virtual events, where they talked about how to do business with the county. They invited them in, they answered questions. So I'm hoping that as you continue to have these conversations about how we'll use this data, how we'll leverage the diversity, that we'll start thinking about ways to engage with the community outside and do more engaging things to bring more people in. Okay, thank you.
Neil, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if you'll have an answer right now, but if not, hopefully you can gather that information. And it's just basically, I know the city only has about a $70 million budget, which, you know, compared to, say, the county's budget, which is almost $6 billion at this point. So, and a lot of the city's expenditures are salaries and things that wouldn't run through a procurement system. So the question is, how much money does the city spend on acquisitions through a procurement system? I'm just wondering if, you know, the number is big enough so that we can actually make a difference through this sort of tracking.
I personally think, yes, the number is big enough. Right now, realize that we work in a decentralized procurement manner. So my job is big in terms of, you know, are we going to reel that in to be able to have the numbers that will allow folks to realize that having your separate procurement department actually will be beneficial for the city? You know, so these are things, again, that I'd like to take up to a higher level to have those discussions. Because right now, we have our technical team during procurement, and I'll give you an example. I'm accustomed to saying to my technical folks, give me your statement of work and I'll do the rest. Meaning I'll, my team will put together the request for proposal. My team will set the schedule for you. My team will put the actual, should it be a request for proposal? Should it be a request for information? Should it be a source is sought? These are things that our technical team really shouldn't, for lack of a better word, say, really shouldn't be burdened with, if you will. The procurement team should be able to take that burden from them and just provide a clean statement of work. What's your objective? What do you want this vendor to accomplish? What are you looking for them to do? And then from there, procurement team will take it.
Neil, I can follow up a little bit. We did do some analysis on the amount of procurement we did when we revisited the thresholds. So we could update that information and provide that to the council back when we revised the purchasing policy. So we could update that information and get that back to you in the next couple of months or so.
Off the top of your head, do you recall what kind of dollar volume we were talking about?
I do not recall because that was back in 2018, I think.
I expect you to have all those numbers off the top of your head, Dennis. All right. It's okay. I understand that the numbers might not be current anyway. So I'd love to see what they really look like and understand what the, you know, what the benefit of that level of effort would be for us.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you, Malane. This is just the beginning of a conversation here and we will be seeing you again soon, I'm sure. Dennis, go right ahead.
Thanks, Malane, for all the work that you put into the form. I know it's something that we have been looking at trying to track for a little while, and that'll be a great accomplishment. Brian, could you bring up Chris Berger and Karen Lottis? Chris and Karen are, have been conducting a research on street and building names and memorials related to the Association of Confederate Soldiers or Slaveholders. I also wanted to note that Nancy Wild, who's also part of their team, was not able to be here tonight. But I wanted to recognize her for the work that she's also done on this particular project. With that, I think Chris will provide an introduction of what we have found up to this point.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening. I am the Historic Preservation Planner for the city. And I, as Dennis said, am joined by Community Museum Program Coordinator Karen Lottis. If we can go to page 47 of the packet, please. So as stated in our memo included in the packet, Karen and I, along with Nancy, researched monuments and plaques in Gaithersburg related to the Confederacy or Confederate sympathizers. And we also researched place names to determine if any names were tied to the Confederacy or slaveholders. The results are on the table shown on the screen. Staff could not uncover any monuments or plaques honoring the Confederacy or Confederate sympathizers in the city. However, there are two street names named after Confederate soldiers. Those are Jubal Place and McCausland Place. Both are private streets. In Amber Commons, near Summit Hall Farm or Park, Confederate Lieutenant General Jubal Early occupied Summit Hall before his 1864 raid on Washington DC. And Brigadier General John McCauslin Jr. served under Early during that campaign. And can we go to page 48 of the packet? This is the next page of the table. So continuing on, there are slave owners with confirmed places named after them in the city. The most notable is Benjamin Gaither, the namesake of Gaithersburg and the Benjamin Gaither Center. Clopper Road is named after Francis C. Clopper, a slave owner and Confederate sympathizer. John T. DeSalem, likely the namesake of DeSalem Avenue. And the city-owned DeSalem House owned slaves at Summit Hall, a source for a number of street and place names in itself. Staff could not determine with certainty if the places named after the Watkins, Claggett and Shefely families were named after those who owned slaves. And more intensive research should be conducted to draw any conclusions. And Councilman Sezma also suggested we look into places named after the Rabbit family. So that could be added to our research list as well. And finally, staff must also research land grant names to determine if any farms on those tracks were slave plantations. Though Karen and I are available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to turn over Ryan a second. I, you know, I'm not surprised that we found some ties to slave-owning families, family names in the city of Gaithersburg, given that, you know, as you said, we are south of the Mason-Dixon line. Maryland was a slave state. It was a tobacco state. Montgomery County was what it was. And I guess at some point, we're going to come to a question which maybe we answer or maybe we try to impanel some. which maybe we answer, maybe we we try to impanel some some group of residents or business or stakeholders in the city to to provide recommendations. But we'll have to come to some, at some point, we're going to have to come to some determination as to what we do about that. What is the best, what is the best thing to do about that? And that's a real, it's actually a really interesting question. Is it, in a sense, you know, I think it'd be a pretty easy determination to 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 make if there was some there was some sort of prestigious awarding of a name for somebody who was, you know, clearly a Confederate, someone who was, you know, who we look at now as sort of treasonous to the nation and and the slaveholder. It'd be kind of easy. But these things, you know, the city of Gaithersburg wasn't founded until, I think, twelve years or thirteen years after the Civil War. And there's just, there's just so, it's just so complicated. So I'll be interested to hear what council members have to say and and what we do with this. We'll start with Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to staff for the research. Apart from the presentation tonight, there's been a lot of emails and back and forth and sort of discussion and written analysis with some council members and staff about this issue for the past several weeks. And I want to just express my appreciation for the engagement of staff and the doing of the research in those exchanges as well. Look, I'm I'm the one who asked for this research at a meeting or work session several weeks back as we saw what was happening around the country. I I felt that it was important for us to at least delve into these questions for our own community and see what we could find out and think about what it means for us and what we may or may not want to do. I think the mayor's right that history is complicated and so many of these different things are intertwined. You know, I I'm not looking necessarily to go scraping the bad parts of history off of our our map because I think we need to make sure that we remember all of history, including especially the bad parts, so as not to repeat them. But, you know, this this is a conversation that we should be methodical about, that we should be sensitive about. I like the idea of maybe putting together some sort of ad hoc citizen advisory committee with broad and diverse representation to talk about these issues and to digest this research. But the mayor is also right that we don't have a sort of big, obvious example that we can point to, you know, a big statue in the middle of our town square or anything like that, that it's obvious that needs to be removed. What we have is is more more nuanced. And it may well be that we decide we don't want to change any names or you know, rename any any streets or or anything like that. But instead that we really want to think about giving historical context to these things. You know, maybe we want to support educational walking tours that explain the context of some of these names and how they got there. Maybe we want to place contextual educational markers in certain parts of the city to talk about the history of why a street is named a certain name or a community is given a certain name so that, you know, we can call it out and understand it for what it is. I think that's a big piece of of this discussion as well. So, you know, there are a few people out there who might be concerned that we're going to, you know, suddenly rename all the streets. There may be a few people out there who are concerned that we're not immediately moving to rename all the streets. But this is a, this is a complicated discussion that we need to take our time with. We need to think about the best way to acknowledge, you know, these these parts of our history. We certainly can't ignore them anymore and we can't gloss over them anymore and pretend like they don't exist. But we need to think long and hard about how to respond appropriately. And so I'm glad we're having this conversation. I'm glad that staff has done this great research and that we actually have the information accessible and available for staff to do for the most part. But I'm looking forward to the continuing discussions and however that manifests, whether it's through a committee or otherwise. I I am glad this is a part of the conversation, but I don't want anyone out there to be panicking one way or the other. We're going to have a deliberative community discussion and try and figure out what makes the most sense while acknowledging, you know, the the really the dark parts of our history, even here in Gaithersburg. Because I think that's the best way to move forward and educate generations in the future. Thanks.
We'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chris, for your presentation. I was really glad that Ryan mentioned the Confederate statues and names during the last meeting we had. I've always enjoyed the city of Rockbells. They have this walking tour and they have the mile markers that actually are all across the city and they have historical reminders about different events that took place there. And then the Montgomery County Council a few years ago, when they deliberated how to, what to do with the Confederate statue that sat at the Rockville City Courthouse. It was like a year-long discussion that they had and they did have the committee that they formed and they came through with recommendations as well. And it was ultimately moved. But what the council did do during that time was request budget funds to create these historical markers to put all across the county. And so while we've received a lot of emails about, you know, don't change our name and we've all come to know Gaithersburg as a different place than what it was founded on. And so while I don't agree that we need to change names or engage in any performative wokeness, I think it's a good time, an important time to really reflect on our history and use this as an opportunity to really cement the history and how far we've come, to share how far we've come. I spoke with Carolyn about this, our Parks and Recs Director. And they're forming a new group to ensure that everyone feels welcome in our community parks. We've all seen the video of the man who was accused by the woman in the park. And so we want to make sure that our outdoor places and our historical reminders are all places where everyone feels safe. And so as we continue to think about recommendations about where to go from here and what to do with these things, I hope that we're working across departments to come up with some recommendations that will provide some important educational reminders for our residents and visitors when they come to the city. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thanks, Loriann. Who'd like to comment next, or should we go to the public? If I don't see any hands, we're gonna, Rob Wu, go right ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I'm going to comment, right? Personally, I like the sound of Robtown. So, you know, as we go forward with this, you know, I mean, I want to hear from the community. I'm not necessarily wedded to any any street names in the city, but I think this should be a community-based effort in figuring out the path forward.
Okay, to any Bethesda Magazine reporters who are watching this, please quote our colleague Rob Wu on what he just said. I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Mike Sessma.
Yeah, you know, I what Loriann and Ryan had to say, I think, were very important. I think the most important thing we can do is acknowledge our history, even if we weren't part of it. Most of the residents of Gaithersburg weren't born here. They moved here from somewhere else. But there still are families here, there are people who've lived, there are families who have lived here for quite a long time. Some of them know that history, but some of them, probably many of them, aren't aware of this other part of the history of owning enslaved, of enslaving humans and profiting by their enslavement. I don't believe that's the the heritage of Gaithersburg, but it is part of the history. So I guess that makes it part of the heritage. I am relieved that we don't have any monuments to Confederate, to traitors. And I'm, the fact that we have a few streets named by people who may have enslaved humans bothers me to some extent, but I think you have to put that in context. I know people hate that when we talk about context, but I think that's that's the reality of our world. You know, we live 25 miles from the Washington Monument, named after the father of the country, right? And close to it is the Jefferson Memorial, wrote, largely wrote the Declaration of Independence. There were a lot of pieces missing from those stories that I think we're all just learning about now or have learned about and the rest of the public is having its more common knowledge about that. I think those are things that we have to acknowledge in our history and put them in context. So it's good to know the origin of some of these names. I'm sure there are some names that that still need to be researched. I remember the Rabbit name, you know, Rabbit Road isn't named after the bunnies. It's named after a family that settled in the part of Gaithersburg that I lived in. I live in now, so and they are, the large number of the family is buried at the St. Rose of Lima Cemetery. It also includes diamonds. So there are so acknowledging it as part of our history, I think, developing a way that people can learn about it if they're more interested in it and be aware of it. And I'm glad to see that that some departments are moving ahead with with efforts in this area. But I think there was some, almost a level of hysteria from some members of the public about the potential that we would be changing names of streets and, you know, painting letters on streets. So I don't think we're here tonight to make that kind of recommendation. But I I would like to hear from the public. That's the one thing I agree with Rob about is that we need to hear from the public. I don't think he was serious about anything else, but that's pretty typical. So anyway. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, any other hands before we go to the public? Okay, I want to commend the public for for waiting this long, anybody who's still online. Tech team, if you can play your little instructional video, that'd be great.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, and I see a few raised hands. We ask, once you come up, you keep your, state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. And and we ask to keep your comments no more than three minutes. Anything beyond three minutes, you can submit to us in writing. It'll be, it'll be considered just the same. Tech team, if you could bring up Zolani Cizito, that would be great. And Zolani, once you come up, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and begin your testimony.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Zolani Cizito. I'm a senior and co-president of the Quince Orchard Freedom Riders Club. I've lived in Gaithersburg for 14 years, seeing firsthand how the school system impacts students of color. I recall one morning in my first grade class, one black girl hid behind the teacher's desk refusing to move. When the teacher asked me to come up to her desk, I saw tears in the girl's eyes. She was insisting that her hair, now in a short Afro, made her look ugly. The teacher bent down next to me and said, Zolani, sue with her until she's quiet and walked away. So at six years old, I was sitting next to this black girl, trying to console her while not really understanding what was going on. I know a lot of Gaithersburg parents who would pick up their black sons and daughters from elementary school and find them sitting in the corner of the classroom after a long day of being isolated and never understanding what their children were experiencing. The first time I was comfortable in my skin was when I was in second grade, simply because my teacher gave me a crayon that matched my skin tone. That little brown crayon helped me because I could finally see myself and it gave me a sense of pride. I think about what if that black girl in my first grade class had that type of recognition? What if those black children hugging themselves in the corner had that type of support? I bring up these memories to represent a fraction of the racially charged experiences the average black student will go through and struggle to process what I now know to be microaggressions. As I reflect on these memories, I'm reminded that us black youth were just vulnerable children trying to make sense of the world we lived in, trying to survive another day with people who were not always nice and fair. That is why this racial equity and inclusion bill is so important. So we don't have to think about what ifs, so that we don't have to keep rebuilding a child's confidence at such a young age. The Montgomery County Council introduced this bill two years ago, while the most diverse city in the world is waiting to decide if now is the right time. I don't want to be that small kid from first grade trying to protect another small kid with a delicate self-esteem. I don't want my peers to march for justice when we have examples from all the other places leading the way to understand the importance of this racial equity bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate you sharing those stories with us. Tech team, if you could bring up Olivia Ryder. Olivia, just state your name and address and or neighborhood and begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Olivia Ryder. I've lived in the Catlins my whole life. I am a senior at Quince Orchard High School and I am also a co-president of the Quince Orchard Freedom Riders. My co-officers and I started this club to create a safe space for students to talk and encourage others to listen and learn from those stories and amplify black voices in the city of Gaithersburg. I am here today to express to our officials this community's dire need for racial equity and inclusivity laws to be put into place. Just two years ago, we witnessed the death of Robert White by law enforcement just 20 miles away in Silver Spring, Maryland. And Robert is just one of way too many names. The community of Silver Spring continues to face backlash for the incident and will always have to live with the fact that a black man was killed at the hands of police in their city. So my question is this, do we want to be next? Do we, as one of the most diverse cities in the nation, want to be known as one that does not protect every single one of our citizens to the best of our abilities? We have the power to do so. And as a resident of Gaithersburg, I am shocked and upset that our city has not acted on instituting prevention and protection laws for our residents of color. Having a diverse community like ours is remarkable and something to be proud of. However, not recognizing this and acting accordingly is not. And as a white ally to the black community, I want my black peers and fellow residents to feel just as safe and protected as I do. So I ask the mayor and city council to please take my comments in the future of generation of our city into consideration while deliberating about implementing inclusive practices in our city. Thank you so much for doing what is right as leaders in our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for the testimony. Do we have any other, any anyone else from the public? That's the, I see Olivia Ryder, but that's the same, didn't Olivia just testify?
Mayor, there are two people that are connected under the name Olivia Ryder.
Okay, well, so you, what you're saying is you think this is a different person?
It's possible. Yes, sir.
Okay, let's let's try it.
Hi, my name's Anya. I don't know why it's coming up as Olivia Ryder.
Okay, Anya, please state your last name as well and either your address or your neighborhood and go right ahead.
Okay, my name's Anya Sise and I live in like the Jones Lane area. I'm also a senior at Quince Orchard High School and a co-president for the QO Freedom Riders Club. And I'm here tonight to advocate in support of a bill or laws on racial equity and inclusion for Gaithersburg. A few weeks ago, I woke up to some heart-wrenching news, as many of us did. Yeah, another innocent black man was shot by the police. This, though, wasn't the heart-wrenching part. I mean, it's not as if he's the first. You know, it wasn't until I continued reading that I realized that Jacob Blake was shot in front of his kids. You know, his kids will never be able to forget this. Moving forward, how they Moving forward, how they will see the world, how they will see their skin. For decades to come, they will have to fight to see beauty and power when they look at their blackness because all they will have constantly seen is trauma and hatred. I know I did. So my question for those in power, you council members, is when? When will enough be enough for you? In my 17 years living in Gaithersburg, one of the most diverse cities in the nation, I have experienced sly remarks of racial insensitivity and the residual effects of structural racism on my then fragile self-esteem in indescribable ways. The culture of anti-blackness in this country, for example, and the lack of positive representation in my history books and in my literature in school and in the media made me hate my Afrocentric features. Or would you like to talk about the fact that in all my years in school, I have never seen more than three black students in my AP and honors levels and honors level classes, that is including myself? Or how about the fact that now that I'm applying to college, I have to hope and pray that a college I'm looking into has a 7% black population? You know, I have seen and felt this country's system of oppression played out exactly as it was meant to. So tonight I implore you legislators to take action. For some of you, this time is simply a trend. But for people who look like me, your decisions could mean life or death. So as my council members and as the elected representatives of the black and brown people of Gaithersburg, will you serve us too? Or will you sleep just fine knowing our blood could be on your hands? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other speakers for the public? If so, just click on the raise hand, the Zoom raise hand button. And we're going once, going twice. There's there's one phone card, hit star nine to raise your hand if you want to. All right. Thank you all very much. So Dennis. Tanisha, by all means, feel free to jump in. But what what are next steps? What are you looking? What sort of guidance are you looking for from us? Or do you feel like you've heard it within the questions and the back and forth at this point?
I wanted to at least point out, you know, we did provide additional information regarding kind of racial equity and how other communities have dealt with the various initiatives they have begun to implement. Those were starting on page kind of 49 is the memo summary. And 62, I wanted to give a shout out to Cindy Hines, who put all that information together. It really does give the council a perspective on how other Maryland communities are dealing with these issues, but also across the nation. I think we've gotten some direction regarding especially the area of street names and building names, and then also a little bit more on kind of some data collection points that we might be able to gather. I think we're also looking for additional feedback. If you have any of some short term or long term goals you'd like the city to accomplish. And then we can kind of put all those together, do a little bit more research and then bring those back to you. You know, ultimately, based upon the feedback, we're looking to formulate those short term and long term goals around the issue and ultimately integrate that into a systematic strategy that we can then adopt in the city's strategic plan.
Okay. Yeah, first off, I do want to, I want to echo your thanks to Cindy for putting together all that information. It was a lot of reading. Most, you know, most of it, as has been said before in this 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 evening, a lot of what we saw there, with the exception of to come apart were were actions from jurisdictions that are that are by magnitudes larger than than we are. So I didn't think all of it, while was extremely interesting, I didn't think all of it was was directly transferable. But, you know, maybe some some elements that can be sort of scaled down to to our level. We'll go to Loriann, then Ryan, then Rob. Loriann, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say, you know, June 6th, after our meeting and we all just found out about what happened with George Floyd. We were asked, where do we go from here? And so I made the recommendation that now is as good a time as any to start really looking internally and externally at racial equity. And I started this conversation because I knew that we had our cohort that was working on creating a framework. But their approach to planning was I know it's going to take a while and they were only focused on parks and recreation at first. And, you know, I think what we've learned over the past couple of months is that this is more than just about George Floyd or about Confederate statues and names. But we were taking a deep dive to look at systemic racism and how it's impacted the systems that have created the inequities that we see now. And so if we are talking about a systems deficiency, we need a systems change, a systems approach. And that's not just with the data that we've seen this evening. I think it's great. I think it's a great starting point. But I think in order to really make recommendations, we do have to look at data across the city. And so I know that with the timeframe that we gave Dennis, he wanted to do a quick turnaround to at least get us to a starting point. And I appreciate the references also that were included to other jurisdictions. I think we can find some more examples that better fit or relate to the city. But even still, I don't think we're necessarily looking for looking to adopt any of those programs or examples that Dennis shared. Matter of factly, 100%. I feel like in order to do this work correctly, we have to see which parts of the programs that were implemented in other jurisdictions could work here in the city of Gaithersburg to help us do a better job here. And so as we are thinking about all the data that we share and where we go from here, I think Kevin and Nathan said it best, like, we're not done. We're just starting. Chris Vance said it again, we need to collect more data and we need to do more evaluations. And as legislators, this is what we're tasked to do. You know, we make laws when we have to make decisions in response to things that happen. This past summer, just last month, I spearheaded the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment. And we're also celebrating the 55th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act. And as we think about 100 years since women were allowed to vote, we think about the importance of laws created. Laws are created to ensure that there's fairness. And when laws aren't strong enough, we have to make amendments to create new laws because the world keeps evolving and we have to adapt. And I want to make sure that if we are really going to explore the racial equity lens, that we're not just going to discuss data, pat ourselves on the back and continue business as usual. It didn't take us, you know, a few years to get here. So it's not going to happen overnight that we really do a deep dive, reflect and figure out a way forward. And so as I'm thinking about, you know, what recommendations to provide to our city staff. And I just hope that well, I would like to recommend that staff develop a process for the mayor and city council to further refine the goals and the process for creating a racial equity framework for the city. I don't think that just looking at the data and letting it be, you know, we forget about this moment, but we actually walk away committing to a process, a process for reflecting on the data, reviewing the data, and then making a plan of action throughout the throughout the departments for each department to have a plan of action. And so I look forward to continuing to discuss this and hear what my colleagues have to say as we continue to see how we will reimagine tomorrow.
That's a thank you, Loriann. That's a really good segue into Ryan.
A great segue. Thank you, Council Vice President Sales. Well, first things first, I don't know if they're still listening, but I just, I really want to congratulate and thank the high school students who appeared tonight to give public testimony for your activism and for your engagement and for your serious leadership on this issue and for calling out those in power in your community, that's us, to be serious about something so important that you obviously care so much about and for sharing your own experiences with us. No place is perfect and there's always plenty more work to do on this front, as we talked about earlier. But relatively speaking, I'm pretty proud of Gaithersburg as a progressive place. Our leadership has acknowledged and condemned systemic racism in no uncertain terms. I want to make sure, you know, our high school students who testified tonight know that. And even though we may not have necessarily adopted yet, because we're still in process, a formal approach to analyzing and addressing racial inequity and other social justice issues in city government, the reality is that informally or implicitly, a lot of our staff and volunteers and elected officials are doing that sort of work day in and day out, even if it isn't formally named or doesn't fall under some official policy as of yet. Unfortunately, or perhaps fortunately, we do not control the school system. And I know that there have been a lot of comments from our public testimony about the experiences through the school system. And there are other things that we as a city government just don't have jurisdiction or authority over. But there are ways that we can creatively influence those other institutions for the better, which we do try to do and we should continue doing more of as appropriate. But our passion for this issue and our understanding of the importance of this issue is precisely the reason why we called for this work session tonight and why we've had our staff doing this research and putting together this information and examples of how other communities are dealing with this, so we can get the best ideas together and the best practices together and be very deliberative about our next steps. I think it's safe for me to say that our entire mayor and council is supportive in general of trying to do things to support and ensure racial equity and improve the inequities that have existed in our community as they have in communities throughout the country. So I just want the high school students who testified tonight to know that and that this is an open public process. And that's why we're here talking about this, not because any of us opposes pursuing racial equity, but because we're trying to figure out the best way to do it with the resources and the scope and the jurisdiction that we have in the most effective way possible. And tonight is a work session, not a city council meeting, which means that we don't have a formal proposed law in front of us to vote on. But perhaps someday, very soon, we might. So please stay tuned and continue your advocacy on this front. Now, in response to Dennis's comment earlier about specific guidance, by my count, I think there were at least three council members who were at least interested in continuing the conversation about whether it makes sense to have a full time employee. Obviously, we have to analyze the budget implications and the other implications and how it would work and, you know, what their what their charge would be as an employee of the city and how they'd fit into the reporting structure and all those kinds of things. But I think it's at least safe to say that there's enough of us who are interested in going forward with the beginnings of that conversation, unless somebody wants to disagree with me about that. One of the suggestions that I saw in the background material, which I think came from Tacoma Park, which, as the mayor said, we're looking at, you know, trying to find programs and policies that are sort of to scale with what we can do as a smaller city, was that I believe Tacoma Park decided that they were going to have a racial equity and social justice item on their council meeting agendas going forward. And I like that idea. I want to throw it out there. We, some years ago, and I think in the midst of the Great Recession, when we committed ourselves to being leaders on economic development, coming out of the wake of the Great Recession in 2008 and 2009, decided we were going to have a weekly report from staff on economic development. And we added it to our agenda. And now we do it as a matter of course at every council meeting. And that's because we found that economic development had particular importance. And I think we can make a similar argument at this moment that racial justice and social racial equity and social justice and racial justice as well issues are at the forefront now to a point where we ought to consider whether we ought to have some kind of regular update, even if it's just sort of a staff update on, you know, scheduling items or other programmatic things or internal staff things that are being done to update us on the progress at our biweekly formal council meetings. Just something to consider that would be easier for us to implement. I don't even think it would necessarily require a law or a vote. I think the mayor as presiding officer could probably just do it. Or with, you know, the consensus of the council, it's something we could consider fairly easy to do that would put something that's important as part of our core values at the forefront of our discussions by adding it to the agenda every two weeks. Something to think about, something that I liked and thought that was not too complicated or controversial for us to implement going forward. And again, to scale with the size of our jurisdiction and resources. So I'll put that out there for consideration.
Okay, Rob. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I guess to Dennis's question for guidance, you know, the process going forward, I think we talked about this back in June, that, you know, I think that, you know, the strategic plan is the is the way to best internalize or formalize the processes. And I think that what we'll need probably is today, I view today as kind of a starting point for for this specific discussion leading up to the strategic plan. And I think we need to have more than just showing up, you know, in May, when we're talking about the strategic plan, to talk about these issues that we do need to have more deliberative process leading up to and consideration of how we're going to be incorporating equity issues into the strategic plan. And I'm not saying this is the first time, you know, we'd be doing this. I mean, since I've been on the council, particularly Mike has been talking about an equity lens on the strategic plan since I've been here. You know, Ryan and I, back in 2016, we talked about adopting socioeconomic policies with respect to the procurement system. And I'm happy, you know, I'm elated with the conversation here today because we've been asking for that for a long time. So Tanisha, on day two, you know, implementing putting together a process leading up to the our discussion on the overall direction of the city, I would think I would rely on you to to kind of shepherd that process to to figure out how to work with staff, to collect the items that will ultimately come to consideration and ultimately adopted into our strategic. and ultimately adopted into our strategic plan. But I do think that, that, you know, I don't think any of us are talking about patting ourselves on the back and, you know, walking away from the data collection or the presentation here today. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time and it's good to finally have momentum. I don't want to say particularly on the procurement front that a certain former city manager might not have been as supportive of that process, but we do kind of have a fresh start here in a lot of respects. And so I'm excited about, about the discussion going forward and how we're going to be going forward with this.
But thanks, Rob. We'll go to Mike.
Well, thank you, Rob, for pointing out that we have been talking about this for a long time and I think that's, that's important. In fact, it goes, goes way back. Either way, I think, as Rob pointed out and as I raised before, the strategic plan is the guiding document for our budget process. I think we certainly have to look at that and find out how that we apply this racial equity and social justice lens to the, every aspect of the strategic plan, because I think that's how we begin to see that thread throughout everything that we do as a city. So, you know, I talked about that before. I, I think, you know, I sent some agreement among everybody. I certainly believe that everybody feels that we're at a good point here. We're at a starting point here, but we still have much work to do. We have a lot of data to collect. But I think the, one of the most important things we have to conduct right now is a self-study, kind of an introspective self-study of our own operations in every department and leadership and in the, in the organization to see, to have a better idea about where people, where our staff stand on this, what they understand in this and what their own attitudes are about some of these issues. And then we have to, we have to look out to the, to the community. So it's, I agree with Ryan, it was good to hear from the students from Quince Orchard High School talking about their, their perceptions and their sense of the importance of recognizing the need to, to address these issues head-on and in public and using them to guide how we, how we work for the city to advance, advance our goals in terms of racial equity, inclusiveness and justice so that it's, so that no, no one part of the community is left out or ignored or demeaned or oppressed. But we have to understand where we are now. So I think, I think we're away from, we're not close to legislation yet because I don't think we have a sense of where we need to start with that. But I certainly think it's something that, that we will need to think about. But I think the first part of it is, is using the framework that we have now in terms of our own organization, our own budget priorities as a city that, you know, we start with the strategic plan and, and using that as kind of the framework for examining the, the extent that we have to address racial equity and inclusiveness and diversity within the city, both within, within the organization of the city and our impact on all of residents of the city. So that's, I don't know if that's much guidance for Dennis, but I think, you know, it's clear that we need, I, I appreciate the recommend, some of the recommendations as a starting point from the Gare cohort. I'm not sure that we want to end, that's where we want to leave it at the beginning, but certainly we need to have some more information before we make some firm decisions. So that's where I am.
Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I did want to thank the students as well. And since it's been mentioned, you know, while we don't oversee MCPS, we do provide grants for after-school programs. And as a former member of the city's education enrichment committee, we've set aside grants, monies to focus on special efforts. There was a technological divide and so we spent a little bit more money on programs that highlighted technology learning in their, their grant, their programming. And so as I think Rob recommended, a STEM program, a STEM initiative fund for students for the education enrichment committee. And so as we evolve, we adapt. And so when we're thinking about, you know, some of the comments that were shared by our students, while we don't oversee MCPS, there are ways that we can influence some of the programs that we support in some of the areas of focus. And so if our students are coming to us, our Freedom Writers, and we're all about books and learning, if there's an opportunity or there are ideas that our students have to address racial equity, inclusion, diversity within your schools, please reach out and let us know so that we can make those recommendations to our education enrichment committee. They come before us and ask us for guidance every year when they do their end of the, end of year reports. And so there are ways that we can better influence what happens. And I, I too want to echo the importance of community engagement. We're having this very important meeting on a night when we don't have a lot of community engagement. And so if we are serious about engaging the community in this process and in the final output of what this framework will look like, a little more intentionality in engaging the community and ensuring that maybe this isn't always on the work session agenda, but it can be on our regular meeting agenda. Or we can also incorporate some community events, community meetings to actually have a conversation. We don't know how much longer we're going to be stuck indoors and I don't want to delay or hinder the process because we can't engage with our residents or a good section of our community to ensure that we have a broad perspectives in what will ultimately come of this. And so I'm a little confused by what's been recommended, but hopefully Tanisha and Dennis will be, feel guided and provide some clarity on what we can expect following this. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go to Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I'd recommend that we take an approach that is fairly tactical rather than a broad strategic, applying this to everything because I think if we try to do everything all at once, we won't actually get anything done that is meaningful. So what I saw today in the various presentations is some areas are in relatively good shape. And I'd say the data that the Parks and Rec Department showed us on camp attendance seemed to reflect the general population mix of different groups in Gaithersburg, which is great and what I'd expect. The, you know, the discussion that we had regarding procurement, I think, was really good. I'd still really want to see, you know, my concern is that we don't, I don't know how much money we spend on procuring items, but if we do some 10% set aside for minority groups, it might not add up to that much. It might not be as meaningful of an effort as some of the things that we can do, but I think we should definitely examine it and see what makes sense. But there are other areas that I think we could have a significant impact that we haven't even really talked about today, but the things that, items that have come up in previous meetings. For example, in terms of reaching out to the community, and I think Loriann made this point as well, at least indirectly, is that we have, according to the demographics of our city, we have huge populations that we don't really interact with at council, at mayor and council meetings and other events. So, you know, I think there's really importance to build bridges to our Asian communities, to our Black community, to our Hispanic communities that have now become very significant. In fact, based on the statistics that we saw, virtually all of the population growth since 1990 has been in non-white groups. The population of white people in Gaithersburg seems to be exactly the same now as it was 30 years ago, while the other groups have grown. And yet, when we have council meetings, back when we used to have them in person and could see who was attending, you know, we saw the same, same faces that looked much more homogenous than the makeup of the city. I've been, I've been advocating for economic development efforts that are more focused on outreach as well. I think the, the key thing that, that, that I think is going to make the biggest difference for this city over the next many years is making sure that everyone who moves here, everyone who grows up here, everyone who's come here from some foreign country becomes an American, becomes a member of Gaithersburg and is entitled to and available of all the same opportunities. So that focuses on education, on economic development, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd really like to make sure that, that whatever efforts we do are focused on things that will have an impact in the short term and in the very long term as well. So simply adopting the county's social equity legislation is probably not appropriate for us, just if, if nothing else, it's impractical when you have a county of, with a budget their size, they can put a social, a racial equity officer in every department. For a city our size, that would be a lot of effort in a lot of departments that is probably hard for us to afford, especially in these days. But so again, I think the, the core takeaway that I'd like to leave you with from what I just said is, let's stay focused. Let's figure out what we can do, where we can make a difference sooner than later, and do one thing at a time so that we actually get things done that have an impact on people. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Dennis, Tanisha? You guys feeling guided here? Do we have a starting point for continued conversation?
Yes, I think, you know, we've always approached this, that this was kind of the starting point to have the dialogue, not only with council, but with the community. And as we move forward, we'll make sure that we're including the community in those discussions and try to be a little bit more creative about that. You know, that's always a challenge in regular times and COVID times. That's even probably more of a challenge in terms of outreach. But I think we have enough guidance to put something together for you to look at some short-term goals and some long-term goals and then ultimately think about how we might integrate it into the city's strategic plan. But I'll let Tanisha chime in too on this because some of this will be in her direction, so.
So first, thank you all for the very thoughtful and deliberative conversation tonight and, and to Dennis and the rest of the team for all the work they've done so far. I completely agree. Dennis and I talked about this presentation happening tonight and it always appeared to me, even before I had joined the city, that what was being presented really was a starting point, that, you know, we kind of, we had to start somewhere and data collection seemed to make sense. I'm glad that it's going to take me a little while to master my Gaithersburg mayor and council fluency. So it sounds like Dennis is fluent and her consensus maybe where I didn't hear consensus. So we'll, we'll touch base on that. But it seemed to be that, that between everyone's comments, if we can come back to you with a balanced approach that is both strategic and tactical. And I need, you know, you, you may have picked this up during the interview process. I tend to, you know, really favor the strategic and, and using that plan to, you know, sort of infiltrate all that we do versus layering something on top. And that said, it also needs to be actionable and we need to be able to demonstrate results, which is what your action plan or our action plan is, is supposed to do each year. So I think that we've got, we've got a lot of great feedback. We've got a lot to work with. We obviously have still a long way to go with data collection. Some of these data points, we don't collect and then we're not, you know, we're not in bad company. You know, most cities have just started to do this kind of work, no matter their size. And so I'm really excited to be joining the city at this point in time, really this inflection point in American history. And I think I, I agree with, with Loriann that, you know, it, it took a long time for us to get to this point. We should not expect things to happen overnight, but I certainly can appreciate and hear from, from everyone that we're not willing to or we're not interested in stopping here, that we'd like to continue to move forward down the path and continue to make some progress. So I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time. I think you said day two, Rob, to try to get fully up to speed with the work that's been done and move to the next level. But this, this staff is incredible. They've done amazing work. And I'm, I'm just happy to be able to add my, my help to that to advance us to the next level. So we, I think Dennis and I need to confer and then we can give you something more concrete about what we will return with and when we will return with that. So I don't want to make any promises tonight, but certainly you'll hear from us very soon about what to expect next and when you can expect that. Is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds great. So with, with that said, I guess I will just note that our next regular meeting of the mayor council is next week, next Monday, September 21st, 7:30 PM. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.